For those of you joining us online, we'll be preparing to start the meeting shortly. Thank you.
Recording in progress.
We're ready.
Okay.
It's now nine o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the June tenth, twenty twenty five, meeting of the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors. Will the clerk please call roll call?
Certainly Supervisor De Sera, present Cummings.
Here.
Martinez, present Konig.
Here.
And Hernandez.
Present. Would any members of the board like to dedicate today's moment of silence?
Yes Chair, in the Aptos area and the Seaside area, we unfortunately had a house fire. And somebody sustained a death there and so to the family, we're so sorry. And to the first responders, thank you very, very much for being on scene and and for helping the remainder people that were affected. Thank you.
Right. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual equal, for liberty and justice for all.
I'd like, I'd like to ask our CEO Palacios if there's any late additions or deletions to the regular or consent agenda?
Uh, yes, Chair Hernandez and members of the board. We do have a late item to add to the agenda that came to our attention this weekend. This is item three point one, which is to adopt a res urgency resolution condemning the use of military force in civilian communities and affirming the constitutional rights of all residents. So the board will need to vote by four fifths majority to place that on the agenda as an emergency late add.
So that would be a consent agenda item on seventy two, I, I believe. Correct, okay. I'll bring you back to the board to entertain the motion.
Still moved.
So we got a motion from Supervisor Martinez and a second from Supervisor Cummings. Do we need a roll call vote for that? Okay.
Supervisor De Sera.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Konig.
Aye.
And Hernandez.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. It'll now be number seventy two, correct?
Okay. So that is added to the agenda as item number seventy two on the consent agenda. We also have one other correction. This is on the consent agenda, item number thirty nine. There are additional materials. There's a revised attachment CSA four rate resolution FY twenty five dash twenty six. Packet pages fifteen twenty seven to fifteen thirty two are replaced. That concludes our corrections for this agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to public comment. There's opportunity for members of the public to speak to us regarding items that are not on the agenda, items on the consent agenda. Or if you'd like to speak to us on an item that's on the regular agenda, please wait till that agenda item comes up, please.
Chair, I, I think you were gonna ask the board to see if they wanted to remove anything from consent before you get to public comment.
Oh, yes. Before we go there, would any members of the like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Okay, see none. Okay, I think your microphone's off though.
Okay.
Okay. All right, we'll now move on to the public comment.
Good morning, my name is James Uwe Women. I hope my other phone that looks just like this is in a, is in my truck. Otherwise, there's lots of information on my dummy phone. You know, it's not very often that I feel like saying a prayer before I speak. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the film with the Netflix, Netflix program Game of Thrones. Got me to start watching TV again. What do we say to the god of death? Not today. So, you know, I don't even know where to begin. I'm really glad that Mr. Palacios, the murder puppet in the county who seems to be above the sheriff, has mentioned what's going on with, uh, let's say the debacle that's going on in LA. Apparently, there's gonna be hundreds of rallies where people are destroying property, you know? Well, this is another example how law enforcement is being thrown under the bus. Only people being more affected by law enforcement and emergency responders from parasites like you two men, Jason Heath and Carlos Palacio, or teachers and youth due to the frequency weapons and the stuff going on. So I did ask the clerk to make more copies because hey, when I got here, there wasn't stuff in the, for the morning. I didn't grab the last copy, it wasn't there. But I'm looking at this, you know? This, this implies that our Western medicine has anything but nefarious things going on for the safety and health of, of the most important aspect of any mammal, which is the female. It's the female that is in charge of, has the responsibility and the only one that can actually recreate life. I mean, our society, I mean, the Nazis learned a lot from people like Margaret Sanger. You know, I can't think of a more disgusting group than maybe what the Nazis actually supposedly did. I don't know, I was, I wasn't there, but they learned a lot from Planned Parenthood. There's a Planned Parenthood in kinda every community, one diagonally across the street from the city of Santa Cruz. My time's up.
Thank you.
Did lose my phone, hopefully it's in my car.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Dutron Kibabiu. My number one job is being a father. My day job is being the director of mentors, a program dedicated to supporting boys, young men, men and fathers. I came here today to thank our Chair Supervisor Hernandez for the proclamation of declaring the month of June as Father Involvement and Fatherhood Month. When we said this kind of message in our community, we support fathers, we encourage families, we help young men, men and boys and fathers to really be the best version of themselves. So we're very grateful. Santa Cruz County has taken this step and celebrate. So we invite nonprofits, businesses, civic churches throughout the month to do activities that elevates fathers, celebrate, recognize us, so we have a stronger community. More than ever, we need to have now stronger community. Everything that's happening in our communities, we're missing a lot of fathers. Fathers are under-resourced, under-supported, so thank you for taking this step. I know you have made this effort, so we appreciate you. And on behalf of some of the fathers who are here, I want to thank you and good luck today.
And good morning, Board of Supervisors, and thank you for your service. My name's Shalak Abanas and I love Santa Cruz. I also love how accessible each of you are to have your constituents come and talk to you. I want to thank you for your commitment to wellness and health in Santa Cruz County by finding the funds to support the MH Can, the Mental Health Client Action Network, which is a peer-run organization that provides peer support, connections, kitchen use, computer use, phones, showers and laundry. I think you'll find that there will be a substantial return on your investment, both fiscally and socially. So again, thank you very much and thank you for the privilege of serving as Chair on the Mental Health Advisory Board.
Me again, Laura Chatham. I just, um, thank you for all you all have been doing, working on the budget. I just have a question today. Last week, one of our elected representatives, one of our county supervisors asked Mr. Palacio about whether we could shift funding priorities. Mr. Palacio replied, and I, I am paraphrasing. Mr. Palacio basically answered that the budget priorities could not be altered because contracts have already been signed and we can't get out of them without perhaps getting sued. So my question is, don't you normally wait for a budget to pass before you sign, before you sign the contracts? Doesn't it take away the power of our elected representatives who are often our community's only voice? If you already have decided what you will do with our money before they even hear the report? I do understand that some contracts must, may run for a few years. So then how much of our somewhat unrestricted general fund is already under contract? Before we even started this whole budget process this year? Then would you suggest that we, the public reclaim our right and our responsibility to our community to make our budget instead of leaving it to the whims of unelected managers? By the way, I bet you are not already under contract for those sheriff deputy trainees straight out of high school because the posting just closed on May thirtieth. And the county retune, we regularly takes months to hire people. So not hiring four kids straight out of high school for a hundred and thirty one thousand dollars per year as advertised in this job listing would give us enough.
Morning, those are some great questions. Thank you for bringing those questions to the board. My name is Carol. I'm here today to strongly oppose agenda item number ten, which would build a hundred and forty foot cell tower in the center of a rural residential neighborhood, which would literally be within a thousand feet of some of the people's homes. Many of the people that currently live near this proposed cell tower actually moved there because there were no cell towers. They did their due diligence, they didn't want to live near a cell tower. And unfortunately, the county changed the codes which destroyed those protections, including zoning, height requirements and the setback. I guess the setback was changed from seven hundred and fifty feet to twenty feet within a, within a home. So unfortunately, if this tower goes in, it would actually set a new standard, a very low standard for similar cell towers. I'm just curious where the safety results, the results of the safety testing for living that close, within that close proximity of a cell tower? And I'm just wondering how many experiments the county is gonna foist upon the people of the county before we really learn about true health and safety, honestly? And similarly, along those same lines, I want to strongly oppose, as I've mentioned many times before, the opposition to a lithium best facility in the county. I know there's three proposed sites at the moment. And you all probably heard on June third, there was a cargo ship near Alaska that caught on fire. There were many EVs on that cargo ship and the crew had to jump into the water to save their lives. And then two days later in Philadelphia, forty EVs that were buses were all packed. They were out of service, they were packed, tightly packed and they caught on fire. So I want to avoid this for Santa Cruz County. I want to ask again for a moratorium on any best facilities going forward. Let's get the results of the lawsuits before we move.
Thank you. I want to make sure that people wait till their agenda item is up for public comment. So this is for items on consent agenda or comments not on the agenda? Thank you.
Good morning Chair Hernandez and Board members, thank you for your service. My name is Alex Apuricio Hernandez and I'm a recent graduate of Harvard High School and have served as a young outdoor leader with County Park Friends for two years. I'll be attending San Jose State University in the fall and intend to study in business economic analytics. Today, I'm here in support of the consent agenda item seventy one, the recommendation by the Parks Commission to approve Valle de Pajaros as a name for the South County Park. Parks manage our community because they are a place where anyone and everyone can make meaningful memories. Most importantly, a place that brings some sort of joy to us. As a young outdoor leader, I know that communities own their parks, communities care for their parks and communities need their parks because it's a free space for anyone and that's why they see it as another home. I know that Pajaros Valley has the fewest parks in our county and has the most young children and families. The name Valle, Valle de Pajaros for this needed new park represents the community and is important because now all children have parks accessible to them. And this Valle de Pajaros will be super accessible to the surrounding schools and their students. Thank you for your time.
Good morning Chair Hernandez and Board members, thank you for your service. My name is Elsie Fabian. I am a recent graduate of Harvard High School and have served as a young outdoor leader for four years and a current member of the Youth Advisory Task Force. I will be attending UC Irvine in the fall and intend to study public health. Today, I'm here to support, in support of the consent agenda item seventy one, the recommendation by Parks Commission to approve Valle de Pajaros as a name for the South Country Park. Park matters to our community because there are open spaces for all, no matter race, gender, gender, um, identity. And it's a place where everyone can enjoy themselves. I also know that Pajaros Valley has the fewest parks in our country and has the most youngest children and families. The name Pajaros de Valle for this is needed because it represents the community is important because Pajaros Valley has a vast majority of Hispanic communities and will make a significant step in naming a park in Spanish rather than English. Thank you so much.
Good morning Chair Hernandez and Board members, thank you for your service. My name is Genevieve Melassio Romero. I'm a incoming junior at Harbor High School and have served a young outdoor leader with County Park Friends for almost, for two years. Today, I'm here to support a concept agenda item seventy one, the recommendation of Parks Commissions to approve Valle de Pajaros as a name, as a name for the South County Park. Parks matter in our community because it identifies Santa Cruz, the people surrounded by these parks and especially our county. As a young outdoor leader, I know that communities own their parks, communities care for their parks, communities need their parks. Because without parks, because without the ability to own, care, need, Santa Cruz wouldn't be the foundation of happiness to our county. And that's why I feel like we need more parks for those that don't have the ability to own or care for their own parks. Thank you for your time.
Good morning and thank you for your service. My name is Yadira Flores. My name is Yadira Flores and I am the Community Mobilization Leaders and co-director of the Young Outdoor Leaders. And when young people feel that parks belongs to them and they are welcome, seen and valued, they show up differently. They take care of the space, they, they dream bigger, they feel a sense of pride and responsibility. But that doesn't happen by chance. It happens when we invite them, when we ask for their ideas and when we trust them to lead. When we include people, voices and decision about the places that they live and love, we are not just making parks better, we are building a stronger sense of belonging where we're saying this is yours and you matters. So let's continue to create spaces that reflect our collective dreams, not just the ideas or the view. Let's lift up youth voices, honor community wisdoms and make sure our parks grow as vibrant, inclusive and deeply loved places for everyone. Thank you for Valle de Pajaros, the name in Spanish. And it would be a plus if you approve a sign to honor the first people that lived and on those lands. Thank you.
Good morning Board and thank you for your service. Maria Roberts, Executive Director of County Park Friends and very proud colleague. And and, and leader with these young, young outdoor leaders, I'm very humbled right now. I just want to say County Parks and County Park Friends were incredibly grateful to be awarded the Outdoor Equity Program Grant three years ago by California State Parks. That is what has enabled us to have this incredible cohort of young people who have continued to offer their ideas, their brilliance, their questions and as you can see, their, their power to impact our organization and of course, our County Parks Department. We will be graduating this cohort on August twenty ninth and you will be receiving an invitation to attend. Thank you.
Good morning, uh, thank you Chair Hernandez and the Board of Supervisors. I'm Zach Johnson, I'm here representing the Seniors Council, which is the Area Agency on Aging for Santa Cruz and San Bernardino Counties. I wanted to thank you today for your proclamation recognizing June as National Adult Abuse Awareness Month. It's a critical issue, as you note in your proclamation, by twenty thirty weeks, thirty percent of our population to be over the age of sixty in this county. That's a rapidly growing number and in fact, it's the fastest growing number in the state. So it's increasingly important issue for us to pay attention to. And although I've been with the Seniors Council for just a short time, I've seen how impactful these programs can be in people's lives. They literally save lives. So I want to thank you again for the recognition of this month and for all of the work that you do supporting our programs and I would implore you to continue to support the basic safety net programs that help keep our seniors safe, healthy and in their homes. So thank you for all the work that you do.
Good morning Board of Supervisors. My name is Dana Wagner, I'm the Director of Meals on Wheels of Santa Cruz County. I'm speaking to you today to thank Supervisor Martinez and Supervisor De Sera for joining Meals on Wheels during Community Champions Week. Both supervisors did a ride along with one of our volunteers and met with recipients of our home-delivered meals. I'm sure you can attest to how rewarding it is to talk with recipients of the home-delivered meals. These are frail, isolated seniors who not only appreciate the nutrition assistance of Meals on Wheels providers, but welcome the chance to connect with others and share their stories. As the ride-alongs showed, the volunteer drivers know the people on their routes and they help Meals on Wheels staff make sure that all participants are physically and mentally well. In addition, Meals on Wheels staff conduct quarterly wellness checks to make sure participants' needs are met. As we near the end of this fiscal year, I can report that Meals on Wheels conducted over nineteen hundred wellness checks from July twenty twenty four through May twenty twenty five. We greatly appreciate the time that Supervisors Martina and Martinez and De Sera spent with us and we hope it was an informative and valuable experience for you both. Thank you for your ongoing support of the growing adult community, older adult community in our county. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors, thank you for my time that you're giving me and thank you for the time that you guys are giving us to come and like speak about problems in the community without going on too much of a tangent, I'm gonna stick to my letter. Now, to the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors, defunding the Casa Pacific Residential Mental Health Rehabilitation Program would be a devastating blow to our community's most valuable members. By cutting funding to this lifesaving initiative, we risk exacerbating mental health crisis, overwhelming emergency services and abandoning those who got, who need guidance back to wellness. The letter outlines catastrophic consequences of defunding this program and urges reconsideration to the project, our community's well-being. The decision to defund Casa Pacific would be a staggering abandonment of our community's most fragile members, individuals struggling to cope with mental illness, trauma and despair by withdrawing support from this vital rehabilitation program. You would condemn valuable citizens to suffer alone, without guidance or hope, overwhelm emergency servants' response teams with mental health crisis, diverting resources from traditional emergencies or force untrained police officers to respond to complex mental health situations leading to unnecessary arrests, unjust punishments, escalated conflicts, potentially ending in tragedy, further traumatization of already fragile individuals. Is this truly the legacy you wish to leave in our community, one of neglect, fear and suffering? In conclusion, defunding Casa Pacific would be a haunting reflection of our local government's priorities or lack thereof. It would scream loudly that the well-being and safety and lives of our citizens are negotiable expenses. We, we urge you to reconsider this devastating decision. Instead, invest in compassion, invest in community trust, invest in saving lives. Will our local government be remembered as one that turns our back on those who needed help the most? Or will you choose to lead with empathy and wisdom, especially in these times that we are facing? We await your decision. Sincerely, Angel Romero and on behalf of the Watsonville community.
Hello, I'm here again to speak on behalf of Casa Pacific. I recently learned that the county has made an offer to encompass leadership. I hope that the offer is enough to keep Casa Pacific open because the gap between them was so large. The initial offer by the county was seventy five dollars per person per bed, which amounts to three hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars, five hundred for the year, which would only really allow for five counselors total to cover a hundred and sixty eight hours through the week. So very far apart, hopefully they get closer. Encompass believes the cost is closer to seven hundred and eleven thousand, seven fifty, so more than double to support the counselors that we currently have for the clients that we care for. We are a small. Um, we are a small fiscally, um, but even the largest provider in Santa Cruz County would struggle at seventy-five dollars a day. Seven and a half years ago, I worked at Front Street Residential, which has forty-seven beds and they charge rent of social security for residents. When I started there, it was a thousand seventy-nine and the county gave an additional thousand per resident per month to us. That amounted to about sixty-nine dollars a day. That was about seven and a half years ago. Now rent is about fourteen-twenty at Front Street. And the, I believe the county, uh, contract has increased, um, which would be, but even if it didn't, that would be more than eighty dollars a day um, at our largest provider, which is forty-seven residents. And one of the ways Front Street was able to accomplish this was during the evening, from six PM to six AM, when I worked at Front Street, they had one staff member for forty-seven. And that was the way they were able to make that work. And I don't say this to condemn Front Street. They are an undeniable good in our community. Their leadership is an undeniable good, their staff is. But that was how they were able to do that. I'm just bringing this up to talk about the difficulties of residential treatment, uh, the costs and what it means. And these costs will be passed on, um, to jail, telecare and out-of-county hospitalization if we don't have Telos or Casa Pacific. Thank you.
Yes, hello, Mila Boyka, District Number One. And, um, first of all, um, here I say again, uh, Mr. Xalit Cabanas. Do you know Mental Health Advisory Board? Every year he comes here several times to thank that he was nominated to be, to lead a Mental Health Advisory Board who does nothing year after year after year. I was the one person who was visiting their meetings, one person, do you know? Like nobody welcome to attend that meeting. And after that, I just stopped going there because there is no way to get anything. Except he just comes here and he thank you every year. And another thing also homeless encampment. Yeah, I just found out yesterday that it's already twenty-six years. Like the community across the road of that homeless encampment was complaining about that. So it is Capital Road and corner of Soquel Avenue. It's Arana Creek. It's not Arana Gouge, it's Arana Creek. And Sheriff's Department and Santa Cruz Police Department cannot figure out whose, uh, jurisdiction it is for sure. So I always call both. Yesterday I made a call again, nobody came. So nobody wanna have deal with homeless encampment. And this is restricted area. It says there restricted area. And so I already asked last year about the fence. Is it possible to put fence if people don't understand English language? And there is nothing done about that. So, and here we have applications for deputies, do you know Sheriff Department? That high school kid can come and be a deputy. You know, when I try to share the law, state and federal and local law with, with the Sheriff's Department, the papers will fall into my face.
Good morning Chair, Board, Administrators. I'm Jeffrey Yarle, the Secretary for the Mental Health Advisory Board for the County. I'm here, um, regarding the consent agenda item TT, our letter for the recommendation to reinstate the HSA funding. I'd like to thank everyone here for the work you've done, especially CEO Carlos Palacios for his, uh, offering of an alternate proposal. I'd like to, uh, thank any staff, any members here who participated in this important change and that funds MHCAN and moves Jemma over to Janus. These are important programs that need to be sustained and expanded. So I look forward to next year working on expanding MHCAN to South County and programs like Jemma. Thank you again very much for your dedication, your endurance, your hard work and your compassion. Thank you.
Uh, good morning. Uh, my name is, uh, Rashawn Williams. And, um, at the risk of sounding like a raver, um, I made a promise to myself this weekend, uh, as I was discussing, uh, current situations with my parents, that if a certain line was crossed, I was not going to go into work. And, um, I'm rescinding that, uh, because I am going to go into work today. Uh, but the active duty military has been called to action in Los Angeles. And as a former Marine, it is extremely, um, concerning. And I think as we approach summertime and these stresses that you're hearing today from your county citizens, it's very important to keep in mind that de-escalation from violence is going to need to be on the fore of everyone's mind as we step into the summer. And the non-efforts at de-escalation that I have seen from federal political leaders. Um, I know that the role of the Board of Supervisors is very limited as far as the day-to-day actions of law enforcement. Um, however, I think that coming, uh, forward at this time to state the importance from citizenry and law enforcement to reduce the threats of physical violence is very important. We have to get ahead of this before the situation hits Santa Cruz and all this budget talk gets thrown out the window because there are other issues that are taking precedence and the house is burning. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Daniela. I'm with, um, Central Coast Energy Services. Um, I'm here to speak on, um, Consent Agenda Number Forty-Six. The Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program, also known as LIHEAP, provides energy payment assistance and weatherization services. Um, and it is a lifeline for the most vulnerable communities in Santa Cruz County and across California. Electric and gas bills are the second highest living expense for county residents. Last year, nineteen percent of households in the county received assistance from LIHEAP to prevent their electricity from being shut off. This program is crucial to ensuring the health and safety of our vulnerable residents. On May second, the President's proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-six eliminated LIHEAP funding, threatening the livelihood of the people that rely on it. Last year in Santa Cruz County alone, more than eleven hundred households relied on this program, including nine hundred and seventeen seniors, two hundred and eighty children under the age of five and eight hundred and nineteen individuals living with a disability. This funding, if this funding is eliminated, these, these residents will face the impossible choice of paying for the energy bills or choosing to pay for food or medicine. The impact of losing LIHEAP program expands, um, expands beyond just assistance. County residents who work to administer this program will also lose their jobs, which inevitably will affect the local economy. LIHEAP is a crucial program that ensures households can keep their lights on. Um, we urge you to support, um, LIHEAP by urging Congress to fully fund LIHEAP. Thank you.
Hello and good morning. My name is Silvia Trejo. I work for Central Coast Energy Services and I am here to speak on Consent Agenda Number Forty-Six. I'm here to tell you about the honor it's been working at CCES, directly assisting low-income households that benefit from the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program, also known as LIHEAP. I'd like to share a couple impact stories from our customers and community members. First, I want to tell you about Fidel Aldama. Fidel is a Watsonville resident and we assisted him with his PG&E bill in February. Fidel is a disabled individual in a wheelchair. He and his wife rely on social security as their only income. Their PG&E bill is over a hundred and fifty dollars a month due to medical devices. Without LIHEAP, they would struggle to pay for rent, food and utilities, especially in the winter when heating is essential for their health. I also want to share the story of Irene Muñoz, who is another Santa Cruz County resident. Irene suffered a stroke fifteen years ago and unfortunately su- suffered a second stroke recently and was hospitalized for over a month. Upon from, upon her release from the hospital, she returned home and found a forty-eight hour disconnection notice waiting for her. With the help of LIHEAP, she avoided disconnection and was able to focus on buying essential needs like food and medicine. These are sto- these stories are not uncommon. Many of us in this room know people in our communities that face energy insecurity. Please help us spread the word about the impact and the crucial need of the LIHEAP program. The new administration is trying to get rid of LIHEAP, so it is our responsibility to fight back and protect and defend our most vulnerable citizens. Thank you.
Good morning friends. I'm Paul Johnston. I'm a member of the Santa Cruz Welcoming Network. Eight years ago, I had the honor of working with your predecessors to draft this county's sanctuary ordinance as well as the city, Santa, City of Santa Cruz's sanctuary ordinance. Twenty-five years ago, I helped, I had the honor of drafting, but I think it was the first sanctuary ordinance, a modern one anyway, and strongest perhaps still in the city of Greenfield. Um, and fifty years ago, I was among the soldiers who at Fordore refused to go and fight, exercised my rights as a conscientious objector to refuse to go and fight in an illegal, immoral war. And in that spirit, I have two s- suggestions I'd like to make. Since my time is limited, I'll make them very quickly uh, for consideration on your item three point one. I'm afraid I haven't had a chance to see the language, but I suspect that it's not there. For one thing, just as those little red cards advise people of their Fourth Amendment right not to open doors to private spaces without a judicial warrant, all of our public facilities as, as well as private homes in our county for folks who choose to exercise those rights should be labeled as private spaces, which will not be, uh, uh, which will not open their doors to ice without a judicial warrant. That's number one. We should have a standard sign that's posted in places like libraries, uh, some parts of schools, some parts of our county facilities, and we should encourage homeowners to do the same. Secondly, we should affirm the right of any county resident who is a member of the National Guard or serving in the military to exercise their constitutional right to not comply with unconstitutional orders, including serving, uh, on the streets against the American people. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Megan Kilmer. I'm speaking regarding Agenda Item Ten, Cellphone Tower Built Summit Drive. Um, I'm a local Realtor and lender in Santa Cruz County. I've been helping people buy properties for over ten years. I'm also a property manager for over two hundred properties in the county of Santa Cruz, including properties that are leased to cell phone tower companies and have seen firsthand how leaseability changes once cell phone towers are built. Um, specifically with ninety-five penny lane, which had an increase in vacancy for over two years and we had to reduce leasing value twice. Properties near in this properties near infrastructure like this are damaging to property values. This I've seen in my experience, reduced property values ten to twenty percent. The Summit Drive area is unique. It's in the redwood forest overlooking the ocean. It's been devastated by the CZU fire complex and folks that have lived there have had to rebuild. A client of mine recently purchased a property and has rebuilt. And now they are looking at the flowers bloom and the fruit trees fruiting for the first time. Their property value has eroded due to infrastructure, due to increased insurance costs and septic restrictions on their property. Including this cell phone tower will continue to erode the equity of the twenty members who oppose this cell phone tower building. Thank you.
Good morning Chair and Board of Supervisors. My name is Shane McKeithen. And I'm a proud Watsonville resident, speaking in strong support of Agenda Item Thirty-One, uh, Three Point One. I'm here because I deeply care about the future of our community and the values we choose to uphold. Supporting our community means standing up for their rights to live, free from fear, criminalization and intimidation, especially when they're peacefully assembly or simply going about their lives. Every resident, regardless of status, deserves dignity, safety and due process. Please adopt this resolution, then put action behind the promise. Take decisive, concrete steps to uphold the well-being of hard-working families. We're counting on you during these critical times. Let's not stop at words and follow through with actions. Thank you.
Is there any public comment online?
Yes Chair. Erica, your microphone's now available.
Thank you. Good morning Board of Supervisors. My name is Erica Padilla Chavez and I'm speaking to you today as a resident of the Pajaros Valley. I want to thank you for adding numbers, uh, item number seventy-two to your consent agenda. And I want to personally thank Chair Person Hernandez for his leadership in ensuring that this item made it to today's agenda. I recognize that you have a lot of issues to contend with here locally. But what is happening in Southern California is scary, particularly, particularly for immigrant neighbors. I am proud of being the daughter of Mexican immigrants and I'm forever grateful to my parents who taught me and my sisters to love our country and to cherish the opportunity to live in this land that is founded on the premise of freedom and justice for all. I am particularly proud of all of you, the leaders of the county and the leaders of our community-based organizations such as the Pajaros Valley Collaborative and others, who can relate to the immigrant experience and who have chosen to use your lives to make our communities and therefore count our country stronger and more vibrant. The contributions of our immigrant families make us better, not weaker. So simply thank you for standing up. Thank you for acknowledging that in Santa Cruz County, immigrants contribute positively to our economic and social pa- fabric and thank you for standing up for our constitutional rights. I suspect we will continue to need your leadership in the months ahead. Thank you so much.
Andrea, your microphone's now available.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
I will be.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, I'm and also in the room, I have the Superintendent of PBUC who would also like to speak. Um, would you like to go ahead Heather?
Hi everyone. I, I just wanted to, um, join in to say I really want to show strong support for item number seventy-two. And I want to urge you to adopt, uh, this urgent resolution condemning the use of military force in civilian communities. I affirm the constitutional rights of all of our residents, including our undocumented immigrants. Uh, the last time we had federal forces that were deployed against the will of local and state governments was using the, uh, was used and was during the civil rights movement. Um, the parallels today are chilling. They're not just accidental and this is more than a humanitarian crisis. It's a moral one. So we need to not remain silent while fear and hate are given room to grow. And history has shown us that what, when silence, um, is there, this is being complicit. And so we, we really should be taking this moment to uplift our commitment to human dignity and to our belief in freedom. So I'm hoping that this resolution, um, passes and that we are supporting all people in our community at this point. Thank you.
Paul and User One, your microphone's now available.
Marilyn Garrett, boy, lots of, um, threats to our survival, aren't there? Uh, one of them is vaccination threatening our health. I want to recommend people, Western A Prize publication called Why Tradition? It's westernaprice.org and an article in here, Vaccination Updates, The Ever-Expanding Push For A Lifetime Of Shots by Kendall Nelson, Director of the Greater Good. I'm reading from the spring twenty twenty-five issue. Weapons Disguised As Medicine, this is part of the article. Once one admits that vaccines are not the life-saving miracle they are marketed to be, it is difficult not to conclude that they are, in reality, weapons disguised as medicine. Consider their toxic ingredients, neurotoxic heavy metals like mercury in the form of phimerosol. Aluminum. aluminum adjuncts, DNA fragments, carrier proteins, metallic contaminants and nanoparticles, glyphosate, antibiotics such as neomycin, squalene, polysorbic eighty, and carcinogenic formaldehyde. These are just a few of the harmful substances deliberately injected into bodies, often without full disclosure or informed consent. The presence of such toxins cannot help but raise serious questions.
Charlie, your microphone's now available.
Hi, this is Charlie Edie, Edie Consultants, representing Paharo Dunes. Um, I'm here today to speak on the item related to CSA four and the 2.8% increase proposed. I realize that the public hearing is in two weeks on the 24th, but we wanted to give you a heads up about some concerns and need for information. In March, we reviewed the budget for the coming year with Michael Beaton, and there seemed to be with the new assessment, which is now more than 3,200 per house, there was plenty of money to cover the upcoming year. So this idea of a 2.8% COLA or CPI increase has come as a, quite a bit of a surprise. So what we'd like to do is have a little more rationale and clarity from the staff about the, why we're doing this, why it's needed, and, um, and we can have a better sense of any further issues that we need to resolve. And I would like to leave you with the thought that while you legally can apply a benefit assessment increase up to the CPI limit this year, 2.8%, you do not have to do that. You can do a lower number, or you can do none at all. Thank you.
Jason, your microphone's now available.
Hello, this is Jason Johnston. I'm a physician assistant with the Homeless Persons Healthcare Project and a SAU 521 member, employee of the, of the county of Santa Cruz. I'm, like to point out a couple of things. One, as I'm sure the board is aware, before cuts to county services, that county clinics, state law requires a specific balancing act hearing, and I question whether adding it to the agenda and allowing comments during public comment qualifies under state law as a balancing act hearing. The normal practice is a special hearing of the board to discuss the impacts of these cuts. So unless the board is going to take the time out of the schedule today, out of the agenda to have a specific balancing act hearing, I question the legality of proceeding with the elimination of radiology and labs at our county clinic system. Second, as a healthcare professional, I'd like to point out that all of the healthcare professionals unanimously are objecting to you proceeding with these cuts and are clearly stating the damage to our patients' health, the public health, the spread of hepatitis C, HIV, syphilis, tuberculosis, and infection and death and disease among the highest-risk individuals in our community that we're supposed to serve. And as a SAU 521 member, the decision to privatize county clinic services, we are well aware of these choices you are making as our elected representatives. You have spoken to the labor movement about your commitment to your principles. This is not what you told us. The labor movement is here. They will defend these county clinics, and we will defend public services in the county of Santa Cruz if our politicians and administrators will not.
Positive Discipline, your microphone's now available.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Brown Lu, and I stand for courage, dignity, and joy for myself and all others. I am the proud daughter of immigrants and the first in my family born in the United States, and I'm raising children in 2025 while serving in my community as Executive Director of Positive Discipline Community Resources. Oh, gosh, this has been a really, really rough weekend and a devastating four and a half months. I'm speaking today as someone who brings my husband and our young children as often as I can to participate in our local government, and I appreciate your resolution and item number seventy-two of the consent agenda. I personally am really grateful for the resolution, and I just, oh, God, I have to say that, man, am I afraid. I'm afraid to continue participating in our local government. I'm afraid to show up. I'm afraid for what the cameras at traffic stops could mean for our community. And I'm really grateful that you're standing with the little power that we have left in our local government to protect our people from being caught in that theatrical cruelty of the Trump administration. You supporting the preservation of our constitutional rights as residents in the face of escalating federal threats of militarizing enforcement is something that I'm deeply, deeply grateful for. I am proud of my heritage. I am proud of what I stand for in this community, and I thank you for your humanity to recognize that this moment is one that cannot go unnoticed. I appreciate also if you could please call to further demystify and de-stigmatize that we are not criminals, that we are in mourning, and that there just needs to be more education in the public about what this moment means because they are so either ignorant or misinformed. Thank you.
Kim, your microphone's now available.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Thank you so much for hearing me today. Uh, so anyways, um, don't be afraid. Trump is a coward. Okay? And I just wanted to let you know I agree with Jason's previous comments to a certain degree there, for sure. So men in our country need a little bit of mentorship, especially Republican men, all right? So I'm gonna hand down some mentorship right here. First of all, our US Marines, Navy SEALs, and Army Rangers. Wow, this is all interesting. I'm thinking about all this, you know? My uncle was a US Marine. I have many combat veterans in my family, and I showed pictures to John Leopold, my uncle. He's a Lieutenant Colonel in the U, in the US Marine Corps, okay? He fought in Korea and in Vietnam, and so you wonder who goes back for that. US Marines, okay, they deliver toys during Christmas. They do not assault American communities and assault communities of immigrants, whether they're legal or, or illegal, all right? They want real opponents to fight. So if you're in the, in the US Marines and Navy SEALs and Army Rangers, I, I cannot see how this helps you in your training when the adversaries that you're fighting are American people and our communities here. You know, you're, you're supposed to be training, you know, to fight real opponents that are armed to the teeth. So I look at this whole scenario as remarkably weak. And, uh, you know, I just gotta wonder about it, you know? This is not the way we, we were supposed to be using our armed forces. We know it's wrong. It puts us on a back foot militarily against foreign powers that wanna do incredible harm to the American people. It's a complete waste of money and time. So if I was in the US Marines, I wouldn't put up with my chain of command doing this sort of stuff. I would be quite disappointed. Anyway, so those are my comments. You folks have a fine day. Thank you very much.
Helen, your microphone's now available.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair and Supervisors. I'm Helen Nguyen Story, COO of the Community Action Board of Santa Cruz County. Along with other organizations in the Pajaro Valley Collaborative, we urge your board to adopt the resolution condemning the use of military force in communities and affirming the constitutional rights of all, regardless of immigration status or background. In these incredibly disturbing times, and I was really moved by Stephanie's earlier testimony, we must stand up against the tactics of fear, violence, criminalization, and stripping away of due process and other rights of our most vulnerable populations, including immigrants and refugees. We must also champion the rights of all of us to free speech and peaceful assembly in the face of these tactics by our federal government or any other governmental entity. Therefore, we urge you to exert your leadership and the power of your example to other jurisdictions to adopt this resolution. Thanks so much.
Paul and user six seven six nine, your microphone's now available.
Hello, good day. I am a long-term resident and homeowner in Santa Cruz City. I am increasingly concerned by the escalation of fear mongering and the militarization, abuse of military power, and abuse of power in general in our nation. I'm also concerned about our local situation where I feel that I have observed very loud vehicles probably transporting drugs or other illegal something and that are clearly identifiable if you're looking closely. I would like to encourage the council to consider noise ordinances, especially concerning loud vehicles. I've been in three different places in town where I've heard the loud vehicles coming in and then seen people exchanging little bags of I don't know what in their little brown paper bags. Clearly, we have an epidemic of opioid crisis, and we have an epidemic of sort of alienation, anger, frustration, fear. There's a lot of beauty, real beauty in this community that needs to be preserved. Our wildlife, our oceans all need to be protect, protected. It's insane to think that the ban on oil extractions might be lifted by someone who simply doesn't seem to care about nature, the environment, or the global and local and national environmental crisis we face. So I'm asking our coun-
Jasmine, your microphone's now available.
Good morning, dear members of the Board of Supervisors. I write you today not only as a concerned resident, but as the granddaughter of immigrants, people who came to this country with the hope of building a life rooted in safety, opportunity, and justice. It is from this perspective that I urge you to adopt a resolution condemning the use of military force in civilian communities and affirming the constitutional rights of all residents. What we are witnessing in Los Angeles is heartbreaking and unacceptable. Our communities, particularly the communities of color, immigrant neighborhoods, and young activists are being subject to aggressive militarization, policing taxi, tactics. Peaceful gatherings are met with intimidation. These are not signs of public safety. They are signs of systemic overreach and a deep betrayal of public trust. The excessive use of force undermines our shared values and disproportionately harms those who have already been historically marginalized. It sows fear where there should be care and violence where there should be protection. The Constitution guarantees all people, not just civilians or those with privilege, the right to speak, to assemble, and to be treated with dignity under the law. These rights are not optional. They are foundational, and when they are denied to some of us, they are threatened for all of us. By adopting this resolution, you have the opportunity to affirm that Santa Cruz is a place where all people are valued and protected regardless of race, immigration status, or socioeconomic background. You can make it clear that our communities deserve safety without militarization, justice without violence, and leadership without fear. I urge you to act with integrity and boldness. Stand with us. Condemn the use of military force against civilians. Affirm our constitutional rights and help create a Santa Cruz County where everyone can live without fear.
We have no further speakers online, Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With that, we'll bring, bring you back to the board for any comments, questions. I'll think I'll just start from my right, right. Supervisor Serpa.
I have no questions.
Supervisor Cummings.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I did want to ask a clarifying question around the Casa Pacific of funding. Maybe CEO Polosius could help clarify that situation.
Um, yes, and we did find that there was some miscommunication evidently because we were not aware until just last Monday about the issues they were having in the funding. That's when we first found out about it. There was also an incorrect item in the newspaper saying that we had eliminated Measure K funding from these residential units that the board had allocated last year. And that was not true. The board, it is actually in the budget, that 400,000 for from Measure K for these residential treatment beds. Uh, and our staff or, uh, human health services agency staff are meeting within Compass to see how we can come to a resolution and keep Casa Pacific open.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure that that was clear to the public so that there wasn't any confusion of the board trying to cut those funds. As pertains to the consent agenda, item number twenty-nine, I believe I voted against this, and so I'm gonna register a no vote on that one. Item number forty-three, adopt resolution opposing new and existing offshore oil and gas drilling and take related actions. I just want to thank Supervisor De Sera for signing on to that item with me. Um, it really is our, our board trying to make sure that we're consistently standing up and opposing offshore oil drilling, and the proposal is to reopen offshore oil, not just here potentially in the Monterey Bay, but throughout the entire coast of California and the United States. Item number forty-five, also want to thank Supervisor De Sera. This is an item to direct the chair to send a letter of support for Assembly Bill 1243, the Polluters Pay Climate Superfund Act of 2025. Um, and so again, just really trying to hold polluters accountable and want to support Assembly Member Addis, who's authored this bill. Item number fifty-eight, ratify revenue agreements with the City of Santa Cruz, the amount of 140,000, and the City of Watsonville, the amount of 60,000 for severe weather shelter services during the 24, 25 winter season and take related actions. Just want to thank those two jurisdictions for their ongoing help and support as we're trying to provide winter shelter when, when nights are cold and we know that most vulnerable are exposed to elements, and so just want to continue to support those partnerships with Watsonville and Santa Cruz. Item number sixty, accept and file youth crisis programs, update and adopt resolution designating Santa Cruz County's Youth Crisis Stabilization Program at 5300 So-Called Avenue as the acute mental health facility for youth up to age seventeen. Just want to thank everybody for all their hard work on this. Um, this facility is almost complete, and we'll be really looking forward to that ribbon cutting and, and opening of, of that facility here in our community. Um, item number sixty-two, approve four revenue agreements in the total amount of 496,441 with the cities of Santa Cruz and Watsonville for various behavioral health support services. Um, just again, want to thank staff and our partners in the City of Santa Cruz and Watsonville for all their help and support to make sure that we're providing behavioral health support services for members of our community. Item number sixty-nine, defer to honorable for August 5th, 2025, the public hearing on amendments to the county code regarding the short-term rental regulations. Um, just want to continue to, to support as moving forward with updates to our short-term rental policies because we know short-term rentals have so many negative impacts on the cost of living for many people who are trying to attain housing, just trying to find housing in our community. And then, um, lastly, item number seventy-two, condemning the use of military force and affirming constitutional rights for all. Um, just wholeheartedly stand behind this. Um, it's, it's appalling what we're seeing play out day to day with the militarization, well, the, the, using the military against our own citizens. It's just unheard of and unconscionable that we've gotten to this point, um, especially because it's, you know, it's a situation that they're creating by, you know, getting, people want to support their neighbors from all backgrounds. Everybody deserves to be here and creating pathways for people to have permanent residency should be what we're focusing on rather than trying to just sweep people up and make them disappear to other countries or places where we can't find them. And so just want to thank Supervisor Hernandez for putting this on the agenda and look forward to working with everybody in our community up and down the state and across our country to push back against this fascist regime. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Martinez.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everybody. Um, would like to thank Supervisor Cummings for his comments and Supervisor Hernandez for bringing forward an item that addresses really what's happening at the national level. Um, and actually, when I look at a number of the items that are on today's consent agenda, as well as a number of the callers today, it's just a recognition- as well as a number of the callers today, it's just a recognition of the weight of the weight of what is happening at the national level and the impact that it's having on our local community and our local residents. And so I won't go through each one of those and comment on them, but I just want to recognize that here in Santa Cruz County, we're all in this together. And we are here to stand up for the rights of our most vulnerable community members. And I appreciate everybody who took the time to come speak to us today on those. I would like to let the clerk know that I'm going to be abstaining from items sixty two and sixty three today on the consent agenda as a result of my prior role as both the CEO of Encompass and a board member of CFSC Inc. On items number fifty six and fifty seven, there are two items brought forward that I think are quite related. One is to approve amendment to the agreement with our court appointed receiver for Big Basin Water Company and take related actions, as well as directing the board chair to send a letter supporting the facilitating increased resilience, environmental, weatherization, and lowered liability act to relevant congressional offices and committees. And I just want to thank OR three for their continued efforts to ensure the stability of our water resources in the San Ranjo Valley and to really work with every, you know, federal, state, and local partner in ensuring the resiliency of our community. So I thank them for bringing this forward. On item number sixty, accept and file counties' youth crisis programs, update and adopt a resolution designating Santa Cruz County's Youth Crisis Stabilization Program at fifty three hundred SoCal Avenue as the acute mental health facility for youth up to age seventeen. I do have a couple of questions, so I'm wondering if somebody from HSA or Behavioral Health could come up so I can ask just really quickly. Thank you, Dr. Sandoval. It's nice to see you today. Just really quickly, my questions are around the timeline for opening as well as the timeline for licensing the program. Can you please explain first for the public kind of what's happening to services today versus what will happen on June, at the end of June, July first, and then the anticipated opening for the program?
Yeah, absolutely. Good morning, everyone. So we have had a an agreement with the emergency room department at the local hospital and a agreement with Pacific Clinics to address child and youth crisis intervention that we had hoped would, the timeline of that agreement would really line up with the opening of the facility. And unfortunately, it looks like we might have about a month where there'll be a gap between the continuity of that services. But currently, staff in Behavioral Health, as well as in our medical facilities, are working together very actively to put protocols in place so that our families and our children and youth won't experience any kind of difference in their critical care needs. So what we're working on also simultaneously is a pretty complex licensing process for the facility. The timeline is that construction is targeted to end July one, and we're expecting startup operations to begin right after that. And with open and operational target date between August first and September first, the licensing process in particular requires about three significant components. The first of which is really relevant today with this board item, having our board designate the facility as that crisis receiving center, which will then allow us to move forward with the Department of Healthcare Services for that licensure status as a crisis stabilization unit. Following that, we will also need to do our Medi-Cal certification of the facility for the crisis stabilization unit. And then the next phase will be to do the actual site certification for the crisis residential program, which is co-located in the facility. And so that will require multiple steps as well. That licensure status is through the California Department of Social Services. Will also require a Medi-Cal certification. And then, once that is completed, the facility will require a mental health certification. And then we will be able to then follow through with the final step to get it licensed as a short term residential treatment facility that will serve as the licensing entity for that short term residential stabilization. So the timeline exactly will be very dependent upon the processes with the two state departments with our local team here to work on the Medi-Cal site certification, and then for our team to work in partnership with DHCS around the Medi-Cal mental health program approval. So I can't give you exact timelines, but the way that CDSS has been operating with most of these facilities is we get in the initial phases with the acceptance of the resolution today, the Medi-Cal certifications. We really are able to start operations and move through the licensure process in tandem.
Thank you. That was kind of my question. So are we able to actually open the center in August or whenever the building is ready and operate, provide services without those licenses being complete?
So we will be able to get the crisis stabilization unit going, which is really our initial intent so that we really minimize any shift between the current services and getting the facility going. And we're hoping that the Department of Healthcare Services partners with us so that we can really have, you know, by that September date, the residential program really rolling through. I have seen in my experience as the STRTP licensure category rolled out through the state of California, the facilities were open and operational even as they had their initial community care license in place, but were working towards their actual STRTP license and were able to have residents in the facility. So I anticipate that that should be the same.
Okay, thank you so much. I really appreciate that because I understand how important these services are to our community and all the partners who are working to support these youth. So thank you for keeping us up to date on any, on the timeline.
Yes, yes. Many staff actively working behind the scenes to take care of all this.
Appreciate that. Thank you. With that, that's my final comment.
Thank you. Supervisor Koenig.
Yes, well, thank you to my colleague Supervisor Martinez on item sixty and to Dr. Sandoval for the additional clarification. I did have the same concerns that our youth might end up back at the emergency department at Dominican, you know, waiting in hallways and such. And I'm glad to hear that there is a plan to avoid that. And, you know, maybe begin using some parts of the facility, even if not of the Children's Crisis Center, even if not all parts are ready. And looking forward very much to officially opening that facility. And then on item seventy two, condemning use of military force and affirming constitutional rights for all, I also want to fully support this resolution. What we're seeing happening in Southern California is unnecessary, inflammatory, ill-prepared. There's images of the National Guard troops sleeping in kitchens and on the floor and all kinds of places and loading docks. It's expensive, estimated costing over one hundred and thirty four million dollars. And so this is just really a terrible course of action. And we've heard how important it is to our own community here, and I hope that our collective voices can help turn the tide. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a few items I wanted to address, but I will keep the comments really short for the sake of time. First of all, I'd like to thank all the public that was here addressing us on public comment. And item number twenty nine, illegal dumping, I'd like to thank all the CDI sanitation waste and all the community partners that helped us out with this. Item number forty six, you know, you know, there's that an item is always important when you have three or four CBOs that come and tell you to bring this forward. But this is also very important for our communities like South County, Watsonville, in area, in pockets of Santa Cruz area too. Item number forty seven, the Paulson Technical Advisor Group. First of all, I want to thank all the staff that has participated so far from CDI, from OE three. I think that, you know, once we get, plus all our community partners that have participated so far from the Land Trust to the Conservation District. And item number forty eight, I would like to thank Kami Bacheer to be serving as the alternate planning commissioner. It's always a commitment to work as a commissioner and have to come from South County to meetings over here in Santa Cruz. Item number seventy one, by the Pajarau naming, I'd like to thank all the students that took part in leading these discussions in South County to name, name, name the park. You know, that area in the past was called Salcy Puedes, Get Out If You Can. And I was thinking that they're going to try to name it that, Get Out If You Can Park. Luckily, they didn't. Item number seventy two, military force, you know, this is something that's also really important for our entire community, our entire county. It falls in line with our, you know, strategic plan goals with our, with Supervisor Cummings at the beginning of the year reaffirming our sanctuary status. And, you know, as a veteran myself, I want to thank Mr. Williams that made the statement as a former Marine. But once a Marine, always a Marine, right? You know, I had the opportunity to serve and when I was doing my my MOS, it was, at that time, it was ninety one Alpha Combat Medic. About a third of my unit got directly sent to units going to Panama. And I kept in touch with most of them. But that was one of the wars that had to deal a lot with public. And, and it was directly, you know, communities of color. It was directly Nabarios that they called them over there in Panama. And a lot of them, when they came back, they got settled in Fort Hood where I was, the first cavalry Division. And a lot of them have had to deal with deep seated PTSD issues and suicide. But not only is it tragic for our community, but also for these soldiers upon their return. So it's better that we keep them out of these situations. That concludes my remarks. That will bring it back to the board to entertain an approved motion.
I'll move approval of our consent agenda today.
Second.
We got a motion from Supervisor De Sera, a second from Supervisor Koenig, and a registered no vote for item number twenty nine from Supervisor Cummings. And I forgot the two numbers.
Sixty two and sixty three, abstaining.
Sixty two and sixty three, the items dealing with the two nonprofits you served on.
Thank you. Supervisor Koenig.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
De Sera and Hernandez.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll hold a hearing in accordance with the Bellison Act to consider the redesign of the county's clinical services, including ending health services agencies, radiology, and laboratory services. Let me, I've got three agendas for today, so I have to make sure I'm doing everything here. I'll turn it over to Jennifer Herrera, Acting Director of HSA, Julian Wren, Administrative Services Manager, and Raquel Ruiz, Senior Health Services Manager, for the presentation.
Good morning, Chair Hernandez and Supervisors. My name is Jen Herrera. I'm the interim Director for the Health Services Agency. I'm joined by my colleagues Raquel Ramirez Ruiz and Julian Wren, who oversee operations and finances in our Health Centers Division. We are here to present the public bellance and hearing on our proposed lab and radiology changes for our health centers. I'll start with a broad overview and some background for our health centers, and then I'll turn it over to our staff for details on operations and finances. For some context, counties in California are legally mandated to provide care for, quote, "the indigent population." Those who are poor and under uninsured. Every county has their own unique way of meeting this mandate. And in our county, one of the ways, one of the ways we fulfill this obligation is through providing direct healthcare services through our federally qualified healthcare centers. However, as we discussed last week, the expenses for our healthcare services are outpacing our revenues. And though we're seeing gains in our revenue due to increased productivity and other efficiencies, it is not enough to sustain our current operations. So we're proposing to modify our clinic operations in order to maintain our core services in a balanced budget. And this is, the proposal here before you is just one of multiple tactics to increase our efficiency and our sustainability. Go back one slide, please. So just some background on a Bellison Act hearing. California law requires that counties conduct a public hearing for input into proposed public health service reductions that impact our indigent population. The spirit of this hearing today is to be transparent about the changes, ensure there's opportunity for community voice, support a democratic process for making decisions, and protecting the most vulnerable in our community. HSA shared our lab and radiology reductions in the proposed budget and posted public notices of this hearing on May twentieth. So here's a very high level summary of what the changes actually look like. So our current practice is that we do operate what's called a CLIA waiver, a CLIA waved lab. So we can provide onsite, simple laboratory tests, and we do have radiology. We have existing agreements with external labs for more complex diagnostics and radiology. And we also have agreements with radiology labs throughout the county. We have staff to collect specimens, and our lab staff also provide quality assurance oversight of specimens sent to providers such as Quest for Processing. We currently manage equipment related to these services. For radiology, we only provide X-ray. And I do want to note that our health center's lab has also supported our public health division with specimen packaging and transport to specialized public health labs outside and in other county jurisdictions. So the proposed changes include maintaining our CLIA waved lab. So we will continue to be able to provide point of care testing. We will continue to have agreements with outside imaging and labs like we do right now for more complex labs. But we are, the main change is that we are going to have limited staff to collect specimens. And really, we'll be referring patients to community providers who can bill for these services directly. Next slide, please. So before diving into details, just a couple more slides on the health center's background. We have considered our health center's mission and vision when developing this recommendation. Specifically with our mission to provide comprehensive and affordable primary and integrated behavioral healthcare services for people of all ages, and our vision of supporting long term equitable access to healthcare services. And certainly, quality and accessibility of patient care is core to the programs that we provide. Next slide, please. Through our Health Centers Division, we provide integrated behavioral health and primary care through these four health centers in the county, Homeless Persons Health Project, Santa Cruz Health Center, Emmeline Clinic, the Watsonville Health Center, and the Watsonville Health and Dental Center. Last fiscal year, we served over thirteen thousand patients, averaged close to two thousand encounters a week. In total, for the year, about a hundred thousand appointments overall. Although our core services are primary and integrated behavioral health, we provide additional services which support a holistic approach for our patients. This includes medication assisted treatment, acupuncture, family planning, orthopedics, and of course onsite lab and radiology services. So we face a difficult crossroads right now. Do we continue operation status quo, knowing that our financial trajectory is really in the deficit, which potentially could lead us to closing down or consolidating some of our core services of primary care? Or do we start making some structural changes now to right size our operations with realistic expectations of our resources? So as we've developed this proposal, our goals were to maintain access and quality of care for our patients, create sustainable operations by mitigating future financial risks and current financial strains, and minimizing impact for our staff. So I'll now turn it over to Raquel Ramirez Ruiz for further details.
Good morning. We operate lab and radiology services at two of our county run federally qualified health center locations. These locations include Santa Cruz Health Center at ten eighty Emmeline and Watsonville Health Center at fourteen thirty Freedom Boulevard Campus. The Health Resources and Services Administration requires federally qualified health centers to provide laboratory service, laboratory and radiology services, either by providing the services directly or through agreements with community partners. Federally qualified health centers, or FQHCs, are reimbursed primarily through the prospective payment service, or PPS rate. This is a bundled fixed payment covering all provided, covering all services provided in a single visit, regardless of the actual cost of providing that service. We receive a PPS rate for our Medi-Cal visits. Seventy six percent of our patients are on Medi-Cal, and the remaining are on Medicare, self pay, or commercial insurance. Our expenses are outpacing our revenues. Our revenue is primarily based on our PPS rate, which has remained flat. Even with increased productivity, we project that the lab and radiology programs are unsustainable. Most FQHCs provide ancillary services through community resources. The two other FQHCs in Santa Cruz County include Salud para la Gente and Santa Cruz Community Health. And they have agreements for these services. The Physician Ownership Referral Act, also known as PORA, is a regulation that allows FQHCs to enter in agree, into agreements with commercial laboratories to place phlebotomists in health centers. In general, commercial labs are restricted from placing phlebotomists in doctors' offices. FQHCs are specifically exempt from this regulation as it relates to laboratory services. The next slide shows our radiology visit volume in fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. Santa Cruz Health Center Radiology Program completed one thousand sixty appointments. That equates to an average of about twenty one appointments per week. Watsonville Health Center Radiology Program completed one thousand two hundred ten appointments, which equates to an average of about twenty three appointments per week. Combined totals for both locations is two thousand two hundred seventy, averaging forty four completed visits, appointments per week. We have historically utilized outside providers for for imaging services such as ultrasound, CT scans, mammograms, and MRI. We refer out about sixty three percent of our imaging orders and complete thirty seven percent of our imaging orders in house with X-ray. Our patients have access to X-rays through community partners such as Dominican, Dignity Health Advanced Imaging, Watsonville Hospital, Sutter Health, and Simon Med on Green Valley Road. Our lab visit volume, our lab provides lab draws, excuse me, low complexity testing such as strep throat and pregnancy test. In fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, Santa Cruz Health Center Lab completed seven thousand two hundred fifty appointments, which is an average of one hundred thirty nine lab appointments per week. Watsonville Health Center Lab completed seven thousand seven hundred seventy seven appointments, which is roughly one hundred fifty appointments per week. The combined total for our health centers is fifteen thousand twenty seven appointments, averaging two hundred eighty nine appointments per week total. Our staffing, we have two full time equivalent staff in radiology. One is stationed at Emmeline and one FTE equivalent in Watsonville Health Center. These are filled positions. Our Personnel Department has offered to work with staff to find other placements within the county. We currently have a combined three point six FTE phlebotomist in both Watsonville and Santa Cruz Health Centers. This translates to one point eight FTE phlebotomists in each location. We have one FTE senior lab assistant phlebotomist that serves as a supervisor for phlebotomy for both health centers. We have one clinical lab scientist in Watsonville with a grand total of five point six FTE in lab combined. All of these positions are currently filled positions. And again, Personnel Department has also offered to help find placements in other positions for the county, for at the county. We have two anticipated retirements in Watsonville within the next month. Those positions include a clinical lab scientist and a lab assistant phlebotomist. While we're making financial adjustments, our primary concern is maintaining patient, quality patient care and access to essential services. We have streamlined, we have a streamlined approach for referrals to X-ray services. We have established formal referral relationships with local hospitals to ensure patients can access X-ray services without delays. This eliminates the overhead of maintaining our own radiology equipment and staff while preserving patient access. Patients will continue to receive the same diagnostic services they need through our community partners. The care team at the health centers will still coordinate and receive all resort, results to maintain seamless treatment planning. We acknowledge that patients will need to travel to radiology centers, which may cause some inconvenience. We are working to partner with the most accessible locations and will provide clear directions and support for scheduling. Agreements with with external labs. We are exploring partnerships and external laboratory services, I'm sorry. We are exploring partnerships with external laboratory services to maintain onsite collection capabilities. We have an existing interface built with our electronic health record system and a local commercial laboratory that will allow us to share lab results. This partnership will maintain convenience for our patients. They will still come to a familiar location for lab draws and specimen collection at Watsonville and Santa Cruz Health Center. Care coordination is a priority. Results will still flow directly into the patient's medical records. Transportation is also available through the Central California Alliance for Health for non emergency medical appointments. We also have an FQHC grant helping to pay for taxi or bus vouchers for uninsured patients. This approach allows us to maintain essential services while reducing our operational overhead. We are balancing patient needs with financial sustainability to ensure long time service availability. And I'll hand it over to my colleague, Dr. Julian Ren.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm going to give you a little bit of an overview of radiology, lab, and then overall clinics financials. As you can see on this slide, there are approximately two thousand two hundred seventy X-rays that are performed per year. And you can see that the costs are a total of about five hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. For about four hundred and five thousand dollars of that is salaries and employee benefits. Services supplies is about sixty nine thousand, administrative allocation is about fifty one thousand. Fifty one percent of those costs are in Santa Cruz that are at Santa Cruz site, and about forty nine percent of those costs are in a Watsonville site. As you can see there, also, we have some revenue that is related to radiology. As was mentioned before, our PPS or prospective payment system, there's a bundled cost or bundled reimbursement that we get for a primary care visit. These particular revenues are based on a patient coming in specifically for radiology that we can get reimbursed for. Next, let's look at the laboratory. So there's approximately fifty thousand blood draws. That includes, if you think about it, a patient can come in, can have multiple blood draws. That's why it looks like a very large number, because you can easily get to that number if a patient's coming in and gets one, two, ten blood draws at a time. And here, see the overall costs are about one point five million dollars for both of our sites together. About a million of that is salaries and employee benefits. Fifty two percent of those costs are in Santa Cruz, and forty nine percent of those costs are in Watsonville. You can see the lab revenue is about twenty seven thousand nine hundred thirty dollars for similar reasons to the radiology, because of our bundled payment. So this slide shows our overall cost structure and highlights where our expenses are concentrated. You can see here about seventy one percent goes to salaries and benefits. Reflects our people intensive services and represents our most significant investment. Nineteen percent covers our services and supplies, and a little over ten percent is split between our allocations and rent and leases that we have. As was mentioned before, we've seen an increase in our substantial salary and increases, but which is positive for our team, but is also impacting our bottom line. And significantly portion, portion of that are inflation of our service and supplies. So we've seen, see an increase in that as well, especially since beginning of the pandemic. So we're actively evaluating all services based on cost, revenue, and community needs. And we're looking at our overall, overall revenue cycle to improve efficiency and to diversify and optimize our revenue moving forward. So what you're looking at here is our financial trends since twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year through our proposed twenty twenty five, twenty six budget, tracking our revenues against two of our largest expenses, just to give you an idea. So the top line is our revenues. You can see that there's a steadily, steady growth from thirty five million dollars to forty eight million dollars. And then you see here for twenty four, twenty five, what was budgeted is a spike in the revenue. Some of that is due to some one time grants and incentive fundings. Also, some of our improvements that we put into place over the last eighteen, twenty four months. Salaries and benefits, which is the second line there on the chart, is our largest expense and grew from about twenty three million dollars to a high of about thirty seven million dollars with a slight reduction projected for next fiscal year as we implement cost containment measures. Services supplies also grew, you can see there from five point eight million dollars to nine point two million dollars with a small decrease proposed due to also our cost containment. So as you can see, our revenue growth has not necessarily met the same level of increase as our services and supplies and our salaries and benefits. And this gap really highlights the need for us to be strategic and look at all of our services to make sure that we're optimizing our revenue stream and also being able to provide the services that we want to provide to our community. So lastly, I just want to talk and highlight that the external labs and external radiology organizations that we work with in our community are also adhere to rigorous quality standards, have oversight from federal and state level. For us, there's also some accreditation and licenses that they also hold. So what we want to do is make sure that we maintain the quality and the care that our patients receive now. And even as we consider these changes, we want to make sure that the quality and safety are our main priorities, as well as the interface and the communication between the two, two agencies. So to make sure that our clinicians can get the information that they need. So I'm going to pass it over to Director Herrera to make some more thoughts.
Thank you. So in with this proposal, our lab and radiology services, lab and radiology services will still be available for our patients, but with a different design through a referral based program. There's risk of these services being less accessible, which is something we are planning for and will mitigate as best we can. The redesign of these services will allow us to allocate funding and resources towards maintaining our core service of primary care for those who are unable to afford care. So in closing, our recommendation for this board item is to hold the public hearing. And we are here for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is a, this is a public hearing. I'll now open the public hearing to the public to see if there's anyone that'd like to address us on this item.
Good morning. My name is Jeff Zajak, and I am a Senior Lab Assistant for Santa Cruz County Health Services. And when I say phlebotomist, I mean California State Certified Licensed Phlebotomist. And that's for any context that I'm mentioning. I'm here to declare that there's an elephant in the room and point out the emperor does not have any clothes on. HSA currently does not have a lab. We have phlebotomists that do a service just like a medical assistant, a nurse, or a provider does. In the past two years, we have been CLIA waved facility and are limited to the testing with a similar equivalent of tests that are taken home to do, that any trained clinic worker can perform. What these past budget proposals are is an undercover way of attacking our social equity by privatizing our so called lab. The solution could be to incorporate our extremely talented phlebotomists into the clinic like a nurse, clinician, or MA. Why not do that? My answer is because it's a way to not be accountable for the lost ability to generate revenue due to mismanagement. The lab had its chance to generate revenue for our community, but because of management's inability to function that capacity, it's gone now. I know what a mess that created and what is coming or has come to your desk in a fallout of that. That's the elephant in the room. It's the global, I'm sorry, it's the goal of busting the union in the name of privatization that is now the emperor. Let's learn the lesson from history. According to Mark Levinson's statements in the American Prospects four eight twenty two article, the privatization myth, when local health departments cut fifty five thousand jobs over twelve years, we ended up with a private sector unable to deliver goods and a public self sector starved of resources for the COVID pandemic. Our community has needs and it deserves to be protected. My vote is to not gamble away our opportunity to provide that with the privatization of any of our public health services. I encourage you to do the same.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning, Board. My name is Kevin. I'm a therapist at the County Health Clinics here, once again, to oppose the closure of county labs and X-ray and also the cuts of seventy four total positions in HSA, which is more of a thing for this afternoon. The Billings and Hearing Materials, the presentation today state that cutting the lab and X-ray will save us two million dollars annually. This appears to reflect lab costs and to exclude lab contributions to overall clinic revenue. The lab costs two million annually to run, and so if we cut it, we will save two million. I'm afraid, and I'm wondering what we're going to do if we cut lab and X-ray and then see a significant decrease in patient visits. I imagine that it's difficult to try and figure out how much lab and X-ray contribute to getting people into the clinic and keeping them there. And I'm worried that we're going to find out that that was more of a contribution than we thought. What if this savings of two million costs us much more in lost revenue? Are we then going to cut even more programs to compensate for that? When does it stop? When, if ever, are we motivated to consider making investments to increase revenue rather than making cuts to decrease costs? The purpose of this hearing is to give the community a chance to express any concerns about closures to public health facilities. You will have a mere few hours to consider this feedback before making a decision that will likely be permanent. For me, this is a failure of process. These are conversations that should have been happening months ago when the budget was first being created and being put forth for your consideration. It shouldn't be happening now, and it kind of seems, in our opinion, like it's a done deal. Decisions are being made about our programs without staff input and critically without patient input. Trust is built through collaboration and transparency. We don't feel that we've had either. How are staff supposed to trust that these decisions are in our best interest? How is the community? Our community deserves better from us. They're public servants. They need us now more than ever. And unfortunately, it appears that in this time of increasing need, they will be left more and more on their own. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Liam McLaughlin with SGAU five to one. The main thing I wanted to ask is there are, there are things you can do with your in-house county employees that you can't do with contracted employees always, right? You always have more flexibility, always have more capacity with the folks who are in-house. So the idea, I think, that they're proposing is that, you know, no services will be interrupted. It is, we'll get the same thing for, for less cost, but that's just not true, right? When it comes to contracted employees, you don't have the same things you can do. And so a big point, a big example of that is our county phlebotomists are disaster relief workers, right? They can, they can be flexed into these, these situations, really versatile and a really versatile way that really, really helps the public has stopped, I believe, major measles epidemics, all these different issues that some contracted lab is not going to send their underpaid employees into. You know what I mean? It's just, it's, it's not going to happen. So there is going to be a loss here if we go through with this. I think we need to find any other way we can. It's just not this way. Let's keep our in-house folks who can do the job really well. Also, I understand that, you know, from what I've heard, the phlebotomists at these, these contracted places worked there for two years, three years. They don't have good retention rates. We have folks who've worked here for twenty years, really know what they're doing. There's a really significant difference here. So please keep that in mind and don't cut the labs, don't cut, don't cut the X-rays. Thanks.
My friends, again, Paul Johnston. I'm here to speak in support of a local five twenty one and county workforce. Many years ago, when I was a young man, I worked for that union as a union organizer. And twenty years ago, I was the interim executive director for the Monterey Bay Central Labor Council. So one thing I'd like to do is remind you something I think you know, that the labor movement runs deep in this county. It's a sleeping giant, but when it wakes up, you want it to be on your side. And in fact, local government, management, and public workers together can be a powerful and important force in a time like the time we're facing. You want them to be with you. In between those times, I should mention, I was the, I was a professor of sociology at Yale University, Director of the organizational behavior program with a focus on public organizations. And one thing I think I can say with some confidence is with all the best of intentions, management and planning staff suffers, as we all do, from the perspective that comes from their role in the organization. We always overemphasize, and we have a blind spot about the importance of our own role. And I think, you know, when you take a look at where cuts ought to be made and couldn't be made, where it's necessary to make constraints, I think it's necessary to take a look at tightening the belt at the administrative and management level. Perhaps also useful to keep in mind that administrative costs, administrative overhead stays there regardless. It's not a savings to, when you, when you make the staff cuts. I would recommend a process in which you have folks sitting down together with folks from the union to explore alternative budget strategies. And if they can't come to an agreement, allow the union folks to present you with an alternative for you to consider. Thank you.
Anyone online?
Yes, Chair. Call-in user, too. Your microphone's not available.
Well, thanks to the speakers, looking at the agenda here for item seven, there is no reference here in the short version to cutting 74 positions or busting the union for privatization. That's really critical information. Another elephant in the room I'd like to bring up is about all these CT scans, mammograms, MRI, carry negative health impacts. And I think just from the description of staff today, there are so many sources of people getting these radiation detection things. I have a book here called Poison Power: The Case Against Nuclear Power Plants by Goffman and Tamplin, 1971. There's a chapter called, Is Any Amount of Radiation Safe? And I've also read that medical x-rays are a significant factor in causing cancer, quoting briefly from the book. Obscurantist Gobblygook has characterized all efforts to set so-called safe or allowable standards for industrial poisons, radioactive, or other. In truth, standard setters know full well, there is no evidence for any safe amount of a poison such as radiation or radioactivity. The authors conclude no amount of-
Call-in user 6769, your microphone's not available.
Hello, good morning, and thank you so much to everyone who has commented succinctly and profoundly on these issues. I'm a bit late to join the conversation, but I would like to say that I, I feel, especially in this time of greater stress among our populations as a result of the poor direction from the top of our nation and the crisis of violence, escalation of also bacterial situations, one of which I've just gave my life and my leg after six months of treatment, but I know of others who have died. I believe it's essential to keep local phlebotomists and other medical, medically trained people present and active in our community and available, especially and always to the less one, yeah. Well, you know who I mean. The people who don't have the capacity to get the testing may be carrying critical diseases. And I think there are issues of rising bacterial load and climate prices. I'd like Santa Cruz to be a model of caring for the people and also a more holistic approach. And I think that money could be saved, in fact, in the long run, by developing better systems for capturing water and growing fruit trees and other community gardens and things that will feed the people, nurse the people, strengthen the people. There's less disease, there's more community, there's less criminal activity, there's a greater chance of some sort of sustainability. And I do not agree with us cutting away, cutting away, and privatizing when, in fact, we see at the highest levels and all around us how privatization is basically-
Thank you.
Brandon, your microphone's now available.
Hey, good morning, Board. My name is Brandon Johnson. I'm a pastor in Santa Cruz County for the past 20 years. I wanted to express my strong and unequivocal opposition to the proposed AT&amp;T mega tower in Bonney Dune, which is dangerously close to residential homes and unspoiled natural land.
I mean, that, that item is coming up. This is a hearing for the Pelus Act. If you can come back.
You got it. I'll be right back.
Two agenda items forward. Thank you.
See no further speakers, Chair.
With that, I'll bring you back to the, to the board to see if there's any comments, questions. Yes, we've got two minutes.
My name is Spadi Ayad. I'm the supervisor for the radiology department. I'm here to speak to you guys, and thank you for your time. What was presented by Raquel and Julian all sounds great, fine and dandy on paper, but in real life, it doesn't happen. We were closed for radiology last year because of RMG shutdown. They sold their practice, so we couldn't have anybody read our x-rays. We referred out maybe four or 500 x-rays. I don't have the numbers. They caught me off guard with the numbers. But maybe 20% showed up for their x-rays and got them done. Everybody else has referrals that never got them done. So if they're saying that they're going to stop that access, I mean, improve that care, it's not going to happen. Our patients are special. They have special needs. They have really hard time getting from, from point A to point B, calling a cab, calling a bus, an Uber, CCA, Hartz and whatever, that car company, it's not going to work because they're going to get frustrated and leave. Charles Bruffey, the CEO of RMG, before he left, he said, "Our, our patients were the hardest to do, hardest to get in, and hardest to image because they always never showed up, they always canceled their appointments." Now, that's going to cause frustration for Watsonville Hospital, Dominican, dignity, advanced imaging, because then they're going to be like, "We don't want to see your patients. They don't show up. We're wasting other slots for them." And that conversation happened many times since I've been the radiology supervisor. And I had to burn, fight those, I had to put out those fires. And having radiology in-house is going to help these patients get access to care right away. It's going to help the doctors provide care right away, diagnose if they have TB, if they have, you know, pneumonia, if they broke a leg, we got them into ortho. And that's going to generate more appointments. They're going to come back and see ortho, they're going to have follow-ups, and that's going to have more time to generate more revenue as to what they want. So don't be another barrier, please. Think of our patients.
Thank you. Now I'll bring you back to the board. I'll start on my left. Supervisor Conning.
Chair, there's, just a reminder, there's no action on this item. The action will be taken this afternoon on the health services budget. So just reminding you that.
Okay, thank you. I'll do a few questions now, since you guys are all assembled. The, the first is around the true cost savings, sort of this number of $2 million has been put out there, give or take, a little bit. But I mean, I assume we'd have to issue an RFP for diagnostic services, and that would cost something, is that right? I mean, so what's the actual net savings that we would see here?
So the savings are $2 million. What, as, as Julian, Dr. Ren, mentioned, the way we're financed through FQHC models is bundled payment of, I think it's approximately $400 per visit. So because we can't bill for, for those lab services directly from, you know, patient comes in, primary care visit. So what the proposal is, is that these external commercial laboratories are able to bill directly. And so by referring out, you know, someone else can bill for it, we're not able to. So, and our patients utilizing that service isn't, is an additional cost to us. But, Dr. Ren, did you want to add anything to that?
Was your, was your question in regards to an agreement? Or is that what you were asking for?
That clarifies it, that the diagnostic services are able to bill directly, and that we're not the ones, they're not billing us to provide the service.
That's correct.
There is, you know, I've heard some concern that whoever provides these services within our community might actually have trouble hiring. I mean, you know, I know certainly, you know, telecare, for example, is just one example of a contractor who has come into our community and then realized how hard it is to hire qualified people within our community. I mean, largely, as we all know, because of the cost of housing and living here. Do we know that any of the contractors that might, well, I guess they're not technically contractors, since we're not contracting with them, that anyone, any of the third folks who would provide this service in our community can actually do the job and staff up?
So in preliminary conversations with those potential referring parties, we, healthcare staffing is, is an issue across the board in the nation, including here in Santa Cruz County. So there is a model of having these commercial labs be able to be onsite and providing services. And we've been told that this is feasible, but we do anticipate that there are potentially delays, that they wouldn't be able to necessarily start as of July 1, when this proposal would start. So we're going to keep pursuing that option, but we don't have a definitive timeline of how quickly they can start up because of the staffing issue.
Okay, interesting. And of course, on the item this afternoon, there's a proposal to provide enough funding for sort of three months of a transition period. You know, we heard a suggestion that our, that, that lab staff be incorporated in sort of different revenue generating positions, like MAs or nurses. Can you speak to the feasibility of that at all? And I did, was looking at our job site, and we don't actually have any of those positions currently open, but I mean, interested in your comments.
Yeah, I think it goes back to the uniqueness of how we're financed as a federally qualified health center. We don't have a fee-for-service model. We have a bundled rate. So whether that, that, at that one visit that a patient has, they could see primary care, they could see other services, they could have phlebotomy services, it's one rate. So if we add additional staffing to that service, it's still the one rate. We don't get additional funding for it.
Okay. You know, the, this board has asked for alternatives to this particular proposed cut. I'm just curious if you could elaborate on why we haven't seen any alternatives?
I will defer, so I will share that this, this proposal wasn't just our, you know, executive staff within health services. It was in consultation with the medical directors and the health clinic managers of each of the clinics. It's called the Sustainability Committee. It would, it was also briefed with our Health Center Commission, which we're required to have through as our FQHC status. But, and as I mentioned earlier, the, this isn't, we do have a systemic issue in terms of how we structure our healthcare delivery systems within HSA, just across the board. And so we're looking at how do we have efficiencies in general. FQHCs across the nation struggle. So it's, it's a business model that's just hard to maintain, and we recognize that there's going to be, have some sort of subsidy, especially for the uncompensated care that we anticipate is going to increase, especially with the state proposal of the rollback of healthcare for, for undocumented population. But, so this, this is just one strategy among others, such as looking at how we increase productivity, but also looking at how we support our providers with a culture that supports their success with increasing productivity, which is going to take time. So in the meantime, this is just one step, one layer of right sizing our operations in order to be sustainable with the real challenges and the, the expected challenges that we're going to see due to federal and state impacts. I'll turn it over to Raquel to see if there's additional comments on other, other considerations as well.
I don't have any other, any additions. I think you've covered them, Dr. Edeta.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying is, you know, I understand that you did some internal analysis, and I think it would be helpful for us and the community if that was a little bit more transparent. I understand that maybe some of the other solutions you looked at were not as good. But nevertheless, there must have been multiple options weighed. And so I think that's this sort of question mark that, or question that's lingering in the air, that it doesn't seem answered, or we've sort of said, "Well, what else could we do?" And all we've heard is, "This is what you can do." So again, we'd love to understand more what kind of deliberation you guys went through internally.
Right. And I'll just reiterate what, excuse me, Director Edeta mentioned is, we're looking at, we know, we're trying, we're not trying to cut our way out of this. We're trying to look at increasing access to patient care and increasing access, then, you know, it has an impact, you know, improving productivity, increasing, improving efficiencies will, will help this, this whole health centers be more sustainable.
Okay. I did see our personnel director in the audience just had one quick question for her. Director Patel, if you could come up. You know, there's been some mention that we think that there are other positions that would be suitable that are currently vacant for anyone for, for current lab and radiology techs. Could you speak to, you know, the stability of the county organization, in your opinion, to actually hire folks that are no longer needed, would no longer be needed in these particular positions?
Sure. Good morning, Ajita Patel, Personnel Director. So at this time, given the fact that the proposed budget had filled eliminations, our recruiting team has reached out to all 11 folks who were impacted. And there are a couple who have chosen to retire. There are a couple who have determined that they only want to seek placement at equal pay. That is a little challenging, only because some of the, we don't have a lot of vacancies at that level. And then there are a number of folks who are working actively with the recruiting analysts. And I do believe that we are looking at at least three of them who are very likely today to be placed. So I feel that between now and June, when some of those positions are going to be eliminated, that at least three would be placed. Looking good. A couple of them are soon to have some job offers.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions. Thanks. Supervisor Martinez?
Thank you, and thank you for those questions. I, I share similar questions as well. You know, the board will have an opportunity to talk even broader about this topic in the afternoon, when we are at last day budget hearings. But since we have so many folks in the audience who care about this, you know, I do want to share a little bit of my perspective. You know, one, what's most important to me is that we're maintaining just accessibility and quality for our patients. It's incredibly important, and it is a very special, as the word was used, and important population to serve effectively. You know, I also am recognizing just how difficult of a situation we're in financially. This is a structural deficit that we have, and the federal picture doesn't look good. And we anticipate a reduction of medical reimbursements and perhaps a reduction of eligible services for FQHCs into the coming year. And so, you know, I take that really seriously. And, you know, myself, and I know members of the, other members of the board had an opportunity to visit the radiology and the lab and meet the dedicated workforce who really cares about our patients and have really done a fantastic job. You know, another part of my evaluation is kind of just doing due diligence of understanding what's happening in the other FQHCs in our community. We have three FQHCs. We have our county clinic. We also have Santa Cruz Community Health Center and Salud Parla Gente. And I did make calls, and I talked to the CEOs and the medical directors at the two other clinics, and I understand- And I understand that they also refer out, um, with, with Quest and for their radiology services. And they, they expressed to me that their patients don't see much of a difference, right? That they are able to maintain seamless care. And that was something that was really important to me in consideration, um, of these changes because because that's the bottom line, right? Our patients need to have, um, access to the services that they deserve. I do have a few follow-up questions. You know, we heard some comments about how our teams do more than just, you know, the average lab services, right? Whether it's disaster relief, whether it's, you know, say if there was an outbreak of an infectious disease, this is the team that we call on. Um, do you have any response to that? Do we have a plan for any of these sort of, um, emergent issues that could come and, and, you know, staffing to support that?
Uh, so for disasters and public health emergencies, so that is a, uh, that would be covered through our public health division primarily. But we do have our emergency preparedness, uh, team that, um, helps develop med health plans, um, that supports the county's emergency operations response. So, uh, for, for the public health piece, it would be, um, it would be a process that our public health team would be, uh, absorbing.
And so you feel like we would be able to respond in the event that there was another epidemic of some sort of outbreak?
Yes, um, we would be able to respond. It's, and certainly this decreases our, we would have to figure out a different way to respond. We would, because we don't have in-house lobotomy services, um, to reach out to. Um, so it would be probably a partnership with the commercial laboratories, um, to figure out how we can get the specimens for our disease control cases and, and patients.
Thank you. Another question, and you know, not to put you on the spot. I mean, it's just, I'm, I'm trying to understand this. Between the lab services and a, you know, contract in that regard or radiology, is there one of the two that feels most impactful to our patients?
Based on volume, our laboratory services, um, we do see quite a bit, uh, happening within our, um, within our facilities, uh, which is, uh, what we presented.
Thanks. And, you know, another thing, you know, I want to second some of the comments from Supervisor Koenig about seeing other options or alternatives. You know, one of the things that I heard when speaking with staff is that, you know, there may be willingness to reduce hours or furlough or things like that. Um, and I would have liked to have seen, you know, perhaps an option to keep partial staff on for the harder to reach, those folks who really just, they're not going to go to the next referral, um, while also possibly bringing in, um, Quest or other contracts, right? Is there a balance that we can do just to make sure that there's some sort of, um, way of reducing the, the gap, right? The gap that, or the crack that folks might fall through. So, um, you know, that's just a little bit of feedback to you and, um, um, again, I just, I, I recognize the, the difficult challenge and choices ahead of us. Again, we're going to have an opportunity to speak about it again later today and make a decision around it later today. Um, but thank you for an opportunity to hold this hearing, to hear from the public and answer my questions.
Thank you, Supervisor Martinez. Supervisor Cummings.
I'm trying to keep it brief because I know we're going to talk about this more later. I just, I'm wondering, um, you know, moving forward, or maybe if you could just speak to, to the changes that have happened as it relates to billing and reimbursements, it's kind of gotten in this, us into this position because my understanding is that these services have been offered for the past 50 years and now we're at this point where now we're considering cutting them. And so I guess the question for me is just kind of, if you can just speak to how we got to this point and maybe some of the changes that have happened at the state level as it relates to billing and reimbursements. And if that's contributed to where we are today.
I'll, I'll start and then turn it over to staff for more details. I think, um, healthcare is just a tough business to be in, um, with. So, and then on top of that, being a safety net clinic that is mandated to provide uncompen, care for, uh, people who don't have insurance, you know, they may pay a sliding fee scale, uh, sliding fee scale, but it's, it's never enough to cover costs. So the things that, I mean, has happened, just the landscape over, over time with healthcare is we don't have enough staff. Uh, we don't have enough education pipeline to get staff, um, staffed up. So we've, we, we had the pandemic, which has been a huge strain in our safety net in acute care clinics, uh, acute care, healthcare facilities. And so the changes that have happened, um, over time, like we do, we've had this PPS rate, this bundled rate that hasn't changed over the years. But we've been trying to do as much as, uh, as we can with it. And, um, one of the ways to, to maintain the number of, uh, the amount of revenue is to maintain providers. And so focusing on, uh, retention and recruitment of billable positions has been, uh, something we've been working on over time. But, um, over the pandemic, there's, we just haven't had the productive, uh, because of the pandemic and other pressures for, just, uh, on our healthcare system. There's just a lot that our providers and our healthcare systems are holding and we haven't been able to structure our operations to have the revenue at the level that helps us break even. And so we've been working on level setting that, um, over time. So, so really it's, it's been, it's not that there's been a change in our revenue rate. It's really been a, a systemic change of, just needed to increase our revenue over time. Um, I'll, I'll turn it over to Raquel and Julian for details.
Yes, I want to give a little more, little more context. Um, annually, we do get what I call like a cost of living in our PPS rate is pretty low, doesn't keep up with inflation. Some of the, um, the other things that happened, uh, was that a lot of our services supplies have really, really increased. Things like vaccines cost way more than they did in the past. Um, we, during the pandemic, we, we grew to, to meet the, meet the demand. Um, and there was some COVID funding that was there that has gone, since gone away. Some of the other things that we have an opportunity to do is we do have an opportunity to strategically, um, open ourselves up for an increase in our PPS rate. And part of that depends on the, uh, amount of completed visits that we can meet. There's a minimum amount, um, that's factored into that. And so once we get to that, we're able to get to that point, we were able to, um, trigger what's called a, a, a rate review. So it's a possibility in the near future that we may be able to get a higher rate. But that rate has not kept up with any of our expenses, um, in the clinics.
And just a quick follow-up, who controls the PPS rate? Like, how does that, how is that?
It's the state, it's the state, State Department of, uh, Health Services.
Thanks. Well, I'll just say, cause then we had some big items and not a whole lot of time that I'm, I really do share a lot of the concerns that have been brought up by the workers today. Again, we'll have more time to talk about this, but, you know, having an opportunity for them to also provide a proposal to us, I think would be beneficial just so that we can be able to compare, you know, what the workers may be willing to sacrifice and how that could actually, you know, maybe help keep them employed and keep these services. But I'm open to exploring, you know, all possibilities at this point. Um, but do want to thank you all for the presentation. And again, we're going to have a much deeper discussion when there's time to take action on this item. So I'll conclude my comments and just want to thank everybody for being here.
Thank you, Supervisor Cummings. Supervisor Serpa.
Thank you. Um, the, you know, these decisions that, um, our community in many areas of healthcare have had to make over years are very painful. I'll just start there. I have been an employee at Dignity Health and in the time that I've lived and worked, uh, in the community, they've, um, had to close their rehabilitation care unit, their home health program, their outpatient therapy is now, um, run by Kindred, Plaza Pharmacy. And really painful, cut social workers in the evening, uh, in the ER. Um, Watsonville has cut, years ago, cut their home health service. They used to have a substance use program that was, that's gone. They were hopeful they could put in, um, a program for children in crisis that went by the wayside. And they have essentially one social worker for the whole hospital. So, um, the most expensive part of running a healthcare organization, aside from like your MRIs and your big equipment are staff, right? Staff is always your biggest expense. So it is, I think, painful, uh, to, when we have to look at making these cuts. But in our health services, we do have a structural deficit that must be corrected. I understand, um, that lab services, just like at Dignity Health, they use Quest, right? Just like the other F, FQHC, uh, clinics. In the Capitola office, we have the phlembotomist there on site. In the, in the offices on SoCal that are the higher, the four story, they're downstairs. So it's easy and the results are available in the electronic medical record, um, quickly. The issue that I, I am struggling with are, is the radiology piece because I do think the lab piece, we have an answer for. But radiology, I mean, these are people I, I have worked with these people on the streets. I have put them in my car. I have transported them with much, um, trying to talk them into going when they needed it. And if they had to then go to a different location after presenting at the clinic, uh, many of these patients will not get their radiology, um, exams that they need and their imaging. So is, is it possible that, I mean, I don't know structurally, but could it be possible to keep, is, so let me ask this first. Is there a radiology tech down at Watsonville and at Emeline? Yes. So there's one at each location?
Correct.
Okay.
One FTE equivalent.
Okay. And then the other question I have is, you know, uh, working in the clinic, like I was the social worker for 75 doctors. And so I saw all their high-risk patients. It was me, a nurse practitioner, or sorry, a PA and a nurse. And we case managed a lot of, a lot of patients. I had like more than a thousand on my caseload. They have a panel of 60,000 patients at Dignity. And they took Medi-Cal, right? So, um, PAMF does not take Medi-Cal, Kaiser not really taking Medi-Cal said, says they're going to, but haven't, have been very slow to upload the Medi-Cal patients. So really it's the clinics and dignity health that are seeing, um, the super high-risk patients in our community. Our providers are seeing 16 to 20 patients per day in their practices. And I don't recommend that. But how many patients on average are our providers seeing in the clinic? And because this is a revenue generator?
On average, we're averaging a little over 14 visits.
14 per provider per day? That's, yeah, okay. Cause I know a lot of people no show, so I understand. And then do you have, are there drop-in? People can drop in and see their provider as well if they need to?
Yes. Oh, good. We do have some availability for, for drop-in. Um, and no-show rate is one of the things that we have really worked hard on as a team, um, to reduce. And we've had made some, we've made some reductions in that. We've also, um, increased our ability to see patients by opening up our, our panel. So if we've increased our, um, completed appointments about 20% year over year since last year.
Thank you. Okay. I think, uh, that's all for my questions. I appreciate y'all being here. And I know these are difficult, um, proposals to bring forward, difficult decisions to be made.
Thank you, Supervisor Serpa. Uh, I do have a few, just a few questions. So with this bundle system, the, the FHQC's app, do they, is it? Does the clinic still get the 400 without any labs?
Yes, it's a $423.30 right now.
Okay. And what about the x-rays? How's that work out? Is that part of the bundle or is that separate?
It's part of the bundle. If the patient sees a primary care provider and then goes to radiology or lab on the same, on the same day, it's considered one visit.
Okay. So if they're on separate days, that can be billed?
Correct.
Is that correct for the labs too, or is that different?
That's correct.
Oh.
But we don't get the same rate?
We don't get the same rate. And it's not, you, you don't get the 42330 if it's, if they come in for, just for a lab. It's the, basically the Medi-Cal rate for that particular test or lab draw or whatever this, they need to.
So it's, but you get the 423 plus the lab rate?
No.
No. It's a lower rate for the bundle?
Correct.
Okay. Some of the folks brought up, um, from radiology or, like here right now, but how if a certain service like either x-rays or, or, um, the labs aren't provided, that because they're not working together with the primary care, that those delays equal cost. Has that been looked at? So it contributes to the, you know, the no-shows as well.
What I'm hearing you're asking is that if, if the patient is not, not getting their lab or their radiology in a timely fashion, is that going to cost? Is that going to cost something that you're asking?
Yes.
Okay. And have we calculated, we haven't calculated that, no?
Okay. You know, because, um, I'm part of a healthcare system that is very much, you know, trying to work on the no-shows. They have a tremendous amount of no-shows at the VA. I mean, I myself have x-rays. I got, I got my order to do them December and I still haven't gotten around to do an x-ray. And, you know, this is using community health. I could do it anywhere in the vicinity. But I think you, clinics are dealing with an entirely, you know, even more, uh, difficult population to try to get them in. What things have been addressed to, you know, to address that? Is there like community rides or, you know, taxi rides that are billable to get to their appointment?
We do utilize the Alliance for Transportation. We also have, um, funding to help pay for either taxi or bus services. And I, I do want to mention that our no-show rate is surprisingly low for an FQHC. It hovers in the like nine, 10, 11%. But just want to qualify with, um, with our homeless persons health project, given the nature of, um, of the work that's, that's done and nature of our, of our, um, uh, patients. Our no-show rate is about 25, but combined, um, 25%, excuse me. Combined, uh, we're, we're about averaging total all, all clinics in the 11% range.
Okay. And I think I'd mentioned this, um, you know, I had the opportunity to also visit the labs in the clinic and, you know, everybody there from doctors, nurses, uh, radiology, people in the labs, said that, um, one of the things that they would love to see is to be able to work with billing, with staff management there. And the rest of the FHQs and the community hospital to see how they can address things like productivity and what's billable. But I'm surprised that, you know, similar to what Justin and Supervisor Koenig and Supervisor Cummings were mentioning, that it should have been a little bit more transparent into where we're at in these two departments. And what I mean by transparent is to see what staff has done to address these issues, right? Sort of a task force that involved workers, not just, um, you know, whoever that department heads and, you know, management, but one that involved the workers. So it didn't, so it wouldn't come to us as a, as a surprise either. Was there any, anything done that you, did you guys do any audits of what we could do to make these, uh, two departments? You know, break even?
I think we've done, we've worked on multiple areas of improvement in order to increase our ability to get some revenue or earn some revenue or reimbursement. Part of that is getting our revenue cycle to be quicker. So basically, how quickly can we get paid? And reducing denials, things like that based on CPT codes. And we have internal processes that's ongoing. For example, in the last three, four years, we have reduced our time to get reimbursed to about 54 days. It was double that several years ago. So that's just a, it's just kind of a microcosm of what we've done in, in our entire revenue cycle in order to improve. So if we've improved there, we've, we have a consistent group working on our average reimbursement. So basically we have some visits that are non-billable. But we also have other visits that are billable. And so we're consistently looking at what CPT codes we're using. If we're using the correct ones, are we using enough in order to get the full reimbursement that we can get? So those are all areas that we've worked, worked on. We've worked on education. Anything that comes up, we're surveilling for any errors that come up. And we're working with our medical directors in order to educate our staff. And we're also looking for avenues of increasing our reimbursement by providing other types of procedures and services. So those are things that we're, that's ongoing, that we've been doing and we're going to continue to do. And we've seen, we've seen some positive results from that. And we want to continue to build on that.
And the last thing that we had a conversation about is, you know, I know that, that with labs, there'll be the possibility of them becoming, you know, I was with Quest or someone like that. But with x-ray, initially I was told that it was going to be at Dominican. Is there any changes to that? Because that's, you know, I think that especially for the clinic in South County, that that would be an equity issue, having to drive in the highway, drive all that way to, for, get an x-ray to Santa Cruz for folks that probably don't even have cars, you know?
Yes, so, and to clarify, we are, we have agreements with both Dominican and Watsonville Hospital. We also have agreements with some radiology providers, standalone clinics in South County as well.
So will they be able to have the same opportunity that they have at the clinic to do like drop-in? Possibly do drop-in at these locations that we have MOUs with?
So at, in South County specifically, we have Dignity Health Advanced Imaging as an option and for our insured patients. The drop-in piece, specifically to your drop-in piece, I'm, do you have it?
Yes, when I reached Dignity Health Advanced Imaging, I know it does have drop-in times they can come, that patients can come.
Where's the Dignity location located at?
The Dignity?
There's one on SoCal and there's one on Commercial Way.
And there's a Simon Med in, on Green Valley Road.
So Simon Med only does ultrasound though, right? They don't do x-ray?
The information I have is that Simon Med will do, will see our patients on Green Valley Road for x-rays, my understanding.
Yeah, that was the, the understanding that we had with the VA. But if they don't, they don't provide it, even with an order, they won't provide. They only do ultrasound there.
Thank you.
But it does worry me that they have to go to, what'd you say, Commercial Way or? I don't even know where that's at.
It's, it's anchors.
Okay. Is there any provider that we can bring that would be in Watsonville?
The Watsonville Hospital is the provider for, for our.
And we have a memorandum of understanding?
We have an agreement.
With them? Okay. Well, I'll save the rest of my questions for 1:30. We do have a big agenda before us, so we will now close this public hearing. I literally do got three agendas here. Next, we'll move on to item eight. Hold the public hearing, consider the adopting a resolution approving the issuance of lease revenue bonds, series 2025A by the San Luis County Capital Financing Authority in the amount of not to exceed 15 million or improvements in the Ben, for improvements in the Ben Lohman Transfer Station and acquisition of 42440 May Avenue in the city of Santa Cruz.
Good morning Chair, members of the board. My name is Peter Detlitz and I'm a principal administrative analyst in the county executive office. I'm adjoint here today with Suzanne Harold, the county's municipal financial advisor. We're here with you to speak about regarding items eight and nine related to the issuance of lease revenue bonds. These items will be heard here together, but voted on separately. Sorry. This one, thank you. Today we'll be speaking about the facilities to be financed, the process for the issuance, cost of the financing and the actions that are here before you today. The first project included is, in this financing is for the improvements of the Ben Lohman Transfer Station. The total project cost is $8.5 million. And bids for the project will be open tomorrow on June 11th. And they'll return, staff will return to the board on August, excuse me, 10th with a contract. The second project is the acquisition of the building currently leased by the Public Defender's Office at 420 to 480 May Avenue. The estimated cost of acquisition is $3.5 million and an additional half million to be included for needed repairs to the building. This slide, I'll turn it over to Suzanne for more information on the financing.
Good morning Chair. Thank you. Good morning Chair, members of the board. You've seen the financing process before. The issuance of lease revenue bonds are usually with the county, that's the county's traditional method of financing public improvements, does require the board to conduct a public hearing and then adoption of resolutions by both the Board of Supervisors and the Board of Supervisors acting as the Board of Directors of your financing authority. This slide shows the financing costs. The project funds are about $12.5 million. That's eight and a half for the transfer station and $4 million for the property acquisition. And there's some cost of issuance involved. And so this slide will just show you the, the estimated par amount of bonds to be issued. The bonds will have a 30-year maturity, using the county's current AA plus lease rating. And so the estimated interest cost is about 4.65%. You can see here the annual debt service for the transfer stations, about $540,000 a year. It'll be paid through charges received in CSA, oops, sorry, in CSA 9C. And the annual debt service for the property acquisition is about $255,000 a year. This will be paid from rental savings. The current building rent is about $271,000. So it's just about a break even. The resolutions before you today authorize the sale of the bonds. They set the parameters for the sale of the bonds for a bond amount not to exceed 15 million and an interest rate not to exceed 6%. They approve the form of the financing documents required for the transaction and they authorize either a competitive bid for sale of the bonds or negotiated sale, depending on market conditions. We have had some, a little bit of drama in the bond market in the last couple of months. So we wanted to give your staff flexibility to choose the best method of sale, depending on the conditions when the bonds are to be sold in the middle of July. So the, the actions before you are to open the public hearing, take testimony, close the public hearing, and then acting as the Board of Supervisors, adopt the first resolution under item eight and as the Board of Directors of the Financing Authority to adopt the resolution under item nine.
Thank you for the presentation. I'll now open this public hearing and, by anyone in the podium would like to speak?
I just want to be clear, I did, I did not hear adjoining of these two items as eight and nine. And I actually, I actually wouldn't recommend that, given that you're acting in two separate capacities. So I think you're, you're holding the public hearing right now on item eight. And then once you vote on that, then we'll move to item nine.
Okay, as one fell swoop.
Not as one, oh, two distinct items.
So opening up to public comment? Seeing none, anyone online?
I see no speakers online Chair.
I'll bring you back to the board. Supervisor Cummings?
I'll move the recommended action.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Cummings and a second from Supervisor Koenig. I'll take, roll call vote.
Supervisor DeSerpah? Aye. Cummings?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Koenig?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Aye, this motion passes unanimously. Now continue with item number nine. The, the, item number nine. As a Board of the San Luis County, County Capital Financing Authority, adopt the resolution of authorizing issuance, sale and delivery of not to exceed 15 million of lease revenue bonds, 2025 Series A, and approving related documents and official actions. We'll continue this here. I'll turn it over to Peter Detlitz and Susan Harold.
Thank you, members of the board. This is a companion item to item eight, which was the approval by the Board of Supervisors of the financing. This is the Financing Authority's action to approve the issuance of the bonds.
Thank you. I'll now turn it over to the public to see if anyone would like to address us on this hearing. Seeing none, anyone online?
We have no speakers online.
I'll bring it back to the board to entertain the motion for questions, comments.
I'll move the recommended action.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Cummings and a second from Supervisor Koenig. Madam Clerk, if you take a roll call vote.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Around the interest rate? So I saw that in, you know, I know they've been kind of all over the place. Is this an interest, an interest rate that can be renegotiated over time if, if interest rates fall?
So the interest rate that will be set at the time that the bonds are sold is fixed. You can refinance it after a 10-year period. So after 10 years, you can refinance it, but you will, you will not be able to call the bonds and restructure them during the first 10 years.
And did I, did I read in the backup that it's at 6% right now?
No, the expected interest rate is 4.65% during, using current market conditions. The 6% is just the maximum cap that it could go to. We don't expect it to go that high, but it, it does give your staff a little bit of flexibility in case market conditions change.
Okay, great. And will a report be coming back to the board on what the actual interest rate was when the bonds are issued? Cause I know sometimes they're issued not all at once. Are we going to be issuing these all at once in order to purchase these properties?
It'll be a single issuance. We don't typically come back to the board, but we can certainly inform you on that information.
Yeah, or just maybe let us, yeah, I think the public should know, actually. So that'd be great, thank you.
So the, the bonds will actually be sold in the middle of July and you, staff will be coming back to the board for the award of the construction contract for the Ben Lohman facility. So you'll probably get your update at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor DeSerpah? Aye. Cummings?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Koenig?
Aye.
And Hernandez?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Next agenda item is number 10. This will be a long hearing, since there's an hour of, I guess, presentation. We do have a 1:30 scheduled and a closed session that we need to finish. So it's like right around that cusp of the time. So we're going to, we're, we're going to move forward with item 10. Hold de novo public hearing, but consider the appeal of development permit application, 221049 regarding a proposed wireless communication facility located at 186 Summit Drive, assessors parcel number 08006202, adopts the mitigated negative declaration pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act and take all related actions. I'll turn it over to Sheila McDaniel, Principal Planner, for the presentation.
Good morning. So we're going to go get, get started here. We'll just move to the next slide. Oh, sorry about that. As you know, it's a removal of an existing 70-foot tall lattice tower, satellite dish shed, a shorter lattice tower and chain link fencing is proposed to be replaced with 151-foot tall wireless communication facility, camouflaged as a monopane with nine-panel antennas and associated wireless equipment, generator within an existing equipment building, an outdoor propane tank. They're planning to repaint the equipment building and the proposing landscape screening and other miscellaneous improvements located within the existing building and site enclosure. And a new six-foot chain link fence with grain slats and barbed wire requires a commercial development permit and an exception to height in consideration of adoption of a mitigated negative decoration pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. Project site is located in rural Bonny Dune within Summit Park, a residential subdivision recorded in 1941 that is made up of rural parcels approximately two to three acres in size that are mostly developed with single-family homes. The property is accessed via Summit Drive, a private road that extends from Empire Grade Road to the west. Summit Drive winds around to the east to the subject, of the subject property. Access to the property is provided from the western Summit Drive frontage where gated access is provided. The site backs up to Summit Drive to the east. The area is densely wooded and is characterized by a mixture of both deciduous and evergreen trees with a relatively sparse understory. The project site is currently developed with an existing television booster station established over time from 1969 through the 1980s, contains a variety of telecommunications equipment. You can see in the upper left-hand shot of the existing facility and the existing scaffold and equipment building and fencing. Take one second here. Sorry, moving along too quickly. The project property is owned rural, rural residential and designated rural residential by the general plan. Wireless facilities are not allowed use within the rural residential zone district pursuant to the wireless regulations. Height is regulated by the wireless regulations. A height exception has been required. And then moving on to the existing site plan, all existing improvements are proposed to be removed. Those are shown in red, that with exception of the existing equipment building constructed in 1969. The lower left-hand view is the existing view from the property located to the south. The green arrows will show you the direction of that photo. The lower right view is looking from lower Summit Drive located to the southeast of the site up toward the location of the proposed improvements. So as you can see in the proposed site plan, the wireless facility is proposed at 151 feet. As, as noted, the propane tank, the existing equipment building, proposed underground conduit and a gate and a proposed chain link fence with barbed wire. As just as a note, it's been, project's been conditioned to provide an eight-foot solid board fence. Understory views of the fencing and equipment building are available from Summit Drive as shown in the upper-left image. As you can see, tree branching height was required to be revised to the tower to the, to be least visually obtrusive to Summit Drive, reducing visibility of the foliage. All improvements meet the required setbacks established by the zone district. The proposed commercial development permit application supersedes prior permits as this is considered a new facility subject to all current wireless ordinance standards. And in the elevation drawing here, the monopane is not visible above the tree line of surrounding properties on all sides with exception of a narrow view to the southeast, which is in the lower right-hand corner along Summit Drive as shown in that image and two residents to the southeast far. which is in the lower right hand corner, um, along Summit Drive as shown in that image and two residents to the southeast far below. The lower left image shows proposed landscaping at the south and southeast. Trees to the southeast would eventually grow to screen views across the top of the facility. According to County Code Section thirteen ten six sixty C four, a new wireless communication facility outside of a, outside of a public right of way is prohibited unless the applicant provides documentation prepared by a qualified professional engineer to enable the county to find two things. The proposed facility eliminates or substantially reduces one or more significant gaps in the applicant's carrier's network. And secondly, the proposed facility is located on the least visually obtrusive site and least visually obtrusive portion of the site where the applicant provides substantial evidence that it chose the best solution for the community after meaningful comparison of alternative sites and designs, including but not limited to considering less sensitive sites, alternative system designs, alternative tower designs, placement of tenants on existing structures, that are equivalent or superior potential alternatives. So moving on to the first finding, gap in coverage, the alternative analysis includes a necessity statement by the wireless provider. Since their first public hearing in October twenty twenty three, the applicant's necessity statement has maintained that they have a gap in coverage in both in building and in vehicle service. So it's important to note that in mobile and in, in building, coverage is a gap that they'd proposing to fill. So this is the sixth public hearing and nothing has changed with regard to the gap in mobile coverage that they're seeking to fill. Santa Cruz County Code Section thirteen ten six sixty B eighteen defines a significant gap as a gap in the wireless provider's own services that is deemed significant by certification from the carrier. Propagation maps were provided as part of the necessity statement. At the request of the zoning administrator, the applicant provided test drive data, which is coverage capacity and quality of service data, um, and the following FCC broadband maps, which corroborate the applicant certified statement that there's a gap in coverage and in mobile services. So moving along to the FCC broadband in coverage map, you'll notice your board letter includes a link to this page. So I hopefully you have taken a look at that. The FCC broadband map shows that there is a gap in in mobile coverage and you can look on the, in the image, in the dark blue, it says mobile broadband. The right arrow shows in vehicle mob, mobile. You'll note that Verizon is the only carrier with in mobile coverage per the FCC. AT&amp;T has no in mobile coverage pursuant to this and consistent with their statement of gap in coverage. So and then to note, under federal law, local governments have the authority to regulate the placement, construction and modification of wireless communication facilities subject to certain limitations. And local government's regulations may not unreasonably discriminate among providers of functionally equivalent services and may not prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the provision of personal wireless services. The law ensures that the state and local governments do not unreasonably discriminate among providers of these services. Essentially, if two providers offer comparable wireless communication service, they should be treated equally under zoning and regulatory decisions. For example, the fact that Verizon has in mobile wireless coverage is not a basis for determination that there's no gap in coverage in AT&amp;T's um, coverage of in mobile services. Further, the fact that AT&amp;T has outdoor network coverage is not a basis for determination that there's a, no gap in AT&amp;T's in mobile network. The applicant certified statement, test drive data and FCC's national broadband maps are clear enough evidence to make a determination that there's a gap in coverage of in mobile coverage. Staff's determination, and I put emphasis on this, is relying on the ordinance definition of significant gap in coverage, AKA the applicant's statement of fact, including propagation maps. So moving on to the second national broadband map, you can see that the FCC has fixed broadband map showing that AT&amp;T does not have fixed broadband coverage. You can see a variety of satellite cable and other fixed wireless providers and other carriers, but no identified fixed broadband coverage for AT&amp;T. And then lastly, the FCC broadband map shows that there is a gap in, in five G outdoor stationary coverage for AT, AT&amp;T, but there's no gap in four G outdoor stationary coverage. You'll note that the la, these maps are last updated May twenty seven, twenty twenty five. So although neighbors identified new information during the jurisdictional meeting that, uh, I believe Justin Cummins wanted consideration. This information state that states that there's no gap in stationary outdoor coverage. However, the applicant is not requesting to fill a gap in outdoor coverage. The applicant is proposing to fill a gap in in mobile broadband coverage. In this map, that is the tab to the right of the outdoor stationary in the image here. So you can see, you can go online, you can toggle between them and clearly see what is what. So the outdoor mapping information shown in the Chamberlain Report attached as public comment today on your board item has been provided by the neighbors and Gary Patton's wireless experts to suggest that there is no gap in wireless coverage. This is not the case. There's a gap in mobile coverage. So again, staff is relying on the wireless ordinance and making the required findings regarding the gap in coverage. The certified statement provided by the applicant's engineer since the beginning of the hearing process is sufficient to make this determination. The additional information provided by the FCC mapping and the test drive data that was provided to the zoning administrators for sufficient for this determination. And before I move on to the alternative analysis, I didn't want you to get caught up on looking and reading the slides. So I'm going to just going to start there and say that, once a gap in coverage has been identified, finding required, the finding required for approval specifically states that the wireless ordinance requires a determination that there is no alternative to the proposed wireless communication facility as condition that is technically feasible and environmentally equivalent or superior to the proposed wireless communication facility, including with less visual and or resource impacts. So the wireless regulations also require new facilities requiring height exceptions to be co-located onto existing facilities, base stations or utility poles, unless there is no existing facility that would provide substantially similar coverage and the proposed facility is visually screened, camouflaged or otherwise integrated into the surrounding character of the setting. So now we're going to go into the summary alternative analysis. Feel free to read away. The alternative analysis evaluated a variety of alternative sites to determine if there were any other site that could substantially fill the gap in coverage. You can see in the table that the CTI site, that is the Summit Drive application before you, would substantially fill the gap in coverage at a hundred and forty feet. They proposed a hundred and fifty, but the project was approved at a hundred and forty feet with the acknowledgement that a minimum of a hundred and forty would be required to substantially fill their gap in coverage at both the north and the end and the south end of their coverage gap. So I will go into what the coverage gap is in a moment. The other sites that were evaluated but are not included here are Patrick Drive, which is located thirty feet below the Summit Drive facility. And it's noted by the applicant that it provides less coverage and fails to close the, close the gap in wireless coverage. Other sites that are not included but are included in, you know, in this table, but included in a variety of staff reports throughout this process includes Robles Drive that is here. P Gini failed to, it would, decided not to lease to them, so that's not a viable site. Crest Ranch, located at Empire Grade was also identified to be too far away. The Ben Lohman Conservation Camp on Empire Grade was also located too far away. And then the Bonny Dune Fire and Rescue Station at the intersection of Empire Grade. And I believe it's, um, Felton Empire and Ice Cream Grade is also too far away to, to provide, um, to fill that gap in coverage. So now getting into the lower right hand image, in the lower corner, provided for the Summit Drive on the left and Patrick Road on the site, these are the propagation maps that accompany their necessity statement. You can clearly see that Patrick Road on the right hand side at a hundred and forty feet does not provide reliable indoor and outdoor wireless coverage. That is the green color in the southern portion of the identified gap in coverage to almost half of the residential neighborhoods located on the south portion of the gap along Empire Grade Road near Conifer Lane. At a hundred and forty feet in height, Patrick Road cannot be considered a similar site because it does not substantially fill the gap in mobile coverage. Sure, Patrick Road can provide improved outdoor coverage in blue. You can see they're equal, the outdoor coverage in blue are equal between both facilities. Based on this information, Summit Drive has been determined to be the suitable option for filling the primary objective of filling the coverage gap in in mobile coverage and indoor outdoor coverage. Thus, the proposed project is not required to be co-located on Patrick Road since Patrick Road does not fill the gap in coverage. So the applicant had taken the additional step and evaluated what it would be the required height to, if Patrick Road were considered. They determined that a facility of approximately two hundred and ten feet in, in height would be required to provide similar coverage as the proposed a hundred and forty foot Summit Drive facility. So however, in the event that it is feasible to build a top tower tall enough at approximately two hundred and ten feet or so in height to meet the objectives in eliminating the coverage gap, such a project would not be without controversy. There is no actual application under consideration before your board today. Thus, it would be premature to conclude that the Patrick Road site would be any easier to permit, given that it would be substantially taller than the approved Summit Drive location. The next slide provides your board information about public views of a protected roadway. So we're, we've evaluated the gap in coverage. The alternative analysis concluding that Summit Drive is the, if a feasible site that will fill the gap in coverage at the lowest height of a hundred and forty feet and there are no alternatives that would do the same. So the comparison of both Patrick Road and Summit Drive were also evaluated as part of the, the alternative analysis to, for a determination of which site would be least visually intrusive. The ordinance requires that tower shall be designed to be the shortest height possible to minimize visual impacts. As noted in the project photo simulations, the proposed wireless facility on Summit Drive would fully be screened from public view from Empire Grade Road by location within existing forest. That, just for clarity, that is the left, left hand image there. The Patrick Road facility on the right hand would be visible at existing height of a hundred and fifty feet. It is currently a hundred and fifty feet in height. It's a, it's a triangular scaffold that was authorized by a building permit after the CZU fire. However, it would be significantly visible at two hundred and ten feet. So you can see in the right hand image, the taller extension is the two hundred and ten foot visual, um, impact from Empire Grade. And to note, general plan policy five ten eleven requires discretionary development to be cited out of public view of scenic roads. Patrick Road would be in conflict with this policy. Summit Drive is compliant with scenic resource protection provided to public roads. This includes all county roads, not just Empire Grade. They provided visual simulations. Although they're, they're in their packet, they're not in this image today. Your board should be cautious before concluding that Patrick Road alternative is a viable alternative site providing substantially similar coverage. Staff cannot make the required findings that Patrick Road would substantially fill the gap in mobile coverage or be least publicly visually intrusive, given visual impacts to Empire Grade due to general plan protection provided under SEQA. The finding specifically reads, the development of the proposed wireless communication facility as condition will not significantly affect any designated visual resources. Thus, staff, staff can make the findings for approval of Summit Drive because is not visible to any public roads is the lowest height feasible to fill the gap in coverage at a hundred and forty feet. Lastly, co-location is not required because a hundred and fifty foot Patrick Road site does not provide substantially similar in mobile wireless coverage and would result in greater visual impacts to protected visual resources. So the, so the alternative location at Patrick Road is not required by ordinance and is not considered a superior location. So then moving along to private views, both sites would have impacts on views in private neighborhoods. Patrick Road at two hundred and ten feet to meet the gap in coverage would potentially have significantly greater private visual impacts due to a substantially taller facility required to fill the gap. So then moving on to SEQA, as directed by the Planning Commission. On appeal from the zoning administrator, the Planning Commission requested an initial study prepared to evaluate environmental impacts um, pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. The project was reviewed by the California, the county's environmental coordinator on October fourth, twenty twenty four at preliminary determination to issue a negative declaration with one mitigation by the environmental coordinator and the mandatory public comment period expired on February fifth. All potential impacts were evaluated, including not limited to aesthetic, aesthetics, noise, soils, geology, cultural resources, biological resources, hazards, materials, air quality, et cetera. The project was determined not to result in significant environmental impacts with exception of the potential to nest for nesting birds protected under a federal migratory bird treaty act. Thus, mitigation measure requires pre-construction survey to confirm absence of birds prior to construction or cessation of work until birds have fledged. Oops. So moving on to the basis of, of approval. So mention, I mentioned the findings required for approval, findings for a significant gap. The applicant has amply demonstrated that there's a gap in in vehicle mobile broadband coverage based on their certified necessity statement. That's the bar for a determination. However, they also provided drive data and FCC in mobile broadband mapping to corroborate their determination. Secondly, the alternative analysis has shown there's no other site with less visual impacts at a hundred and fifty feet or even a hundred and forty capable of filling the identified gap in coverage and required finding for approval. Co-location onto Patrick Road is not required by ordinance because Patrick Road at a hundred and fifty feet in height would be substantial, would not substantially fill the gap in cover, coverage and result in greater, greater visual impacts. So Patrick Road neither fills the gap in coverage or results in less visual impacts. A height of two hundred and ten would be required, which would be substantially a negative relative to our protection policies for private, I mean, public roads. Then, and then in addition, the reduction of the facility to a maximum of a hundred and forty feet ensures it still effectively substantially fills a gap in coverage as noted by the, the RF engineer in their wireless statement, while minimizing views across the top of the facility to the extent feasible to make it least visually intrusive. And then again, the facility includes a foam monopine designed to blend into the forest setting and maximize screening. This includes consideration as branching location on the trunk, foliage color matching surrounding foliage, landscape screening and wood fencing to suit the forest. And then lastly, um, compliance with radio frequency and noise thresholds. So all these factors contribute to a wireless facility that is least visually intrusive and compliant with the wireless regulations, demonstrating a comprehensive approach to mitigating visual impacts while ensuring adherence to regulatory standards to fill the, the gap in identified coverage for a determination that there are no other alternatives capable of filling the gap. And then lastly, project mitigation requires a pre-construction survey. And then I just had a few comments before recommendation regarding neighborhood comments. So I believe Julie Cahill made comments about violations associated with facility. There are no open code violations associated with this site. The facility has operated for the last, I believe, fifty years. I did not see any open code violations in our computer at this point. However, I did want to note that since the application was submitted in twenty twenty two, neighbors have lodged service complaints related to existing dilapidated conditions associated with the site. It has been acknowledged by the zoning administrator that the proposed project is a new permit replacing prior work and that it will supersede prior permits and will address site conditions, including landscaping and fencing, et cetera, to bring it up to current code. Project is conditioned accordingly. And then just a couple of comments regarding, um, correspondence from the Berg Law Firm. Um, in response to the law firm noting no gap in wireless coverage, it is just, it's staff's responsibility to implement the wireless code with regard to a determination of gap in coverage, which relies on the certified statement of the wireless radio frequency engineer. The applicant provided additional information, including test drive data and now FCC maps, which notes that there is a gap in mobile coverage. Secondly, with regard to the assertion that Patrick Road is a viable site for co-location, the Patrick Road site will not meet the required finding that it would reasonably fill the gap in coverage or be least visually intrusive, as is a conflict with the visual resource protection policies. Thus, Patrick Road is not a superior site. And then lastly, with regard to comments about microplastics, microplastics were evaluated for potential environmental impacts as part of the environmental review. Material proposed for needles is polyvinyl chloride, also known as PVC. We're all familiar with it. This is not a known hazardous material. Based on the information available about this type of plastic used for monopine use, the project is anticipated to result in limited release of wireless needles into the environment. This limited release would not be considered a source of hazardous materials. The proposed project is not anticipated to result in this. The proposed project is not anticipated to result in a significant source of my microplastics, since the proposed PVC material does not readily break down and is otherwise inert in solid form. There's a lot of talk about microplastics. However, PVC is not a predominant source of microplastics. Plastic bags, as you know, polyethylene and car tires are a big source of of microplastics. That's why plastic bags are banned in California. Car tires make up 20% of microplastics in the environment. Thus, the environmental coordinator determined that the proposed project is not anticipated to result in significant impacts. So with that, staff is recommending your board board hold the de novo public hearing to consider the appeal of application 221049, a proposed wireless communication facility. Staff is also recommending your board reverse the decision of the Planning Commission to deny application 221049 and approve application 221049, thereby upholding the zoning administrator's approval of the project pursuant to the project plans, recommended fence plan, findings, and conditions of approval, and that your board adopt the mitigated negative declaration pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll save the questions till after all three presentations. Next, we will have the hear from the applicant. Again, this is for 20 minutes or less.
Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Chair Hernandez and the Board of Supervisors. And thank you, staff, for your extensive work in researching the site. There's two major questions that need to be answered. Does this close a significant gap in coverage for AT&amp;T? And is this the least intrusive site? And the answer to both of those questions is yes. AT&amp;T's propagation maps, drive test data, and empirical data that they put forth shows that there's a significant gap in coverage. And this site would close that significant gap in coverage for AT&amp;T. The information that's been submitted are the most granular maps that take into consideration topography, clutter, in-building coverage, and coverage while you are driving. Other maps are a generalization and do not take these factors into account. There was a question about alternative sites and technologies and which would be the least intrusive site. The CTI site would be the least intrusive site. It is designed as a monopine that can have three carriers locate on that site as well as the County of Santa Cruz. The Patrick Road site that's been brought forth for consideration, currently as it stand, has constructability issues. It's a light-duty tower that would not hold AT&amp;T's configuration. It would have to be completely rebuilt to do that as it stands. In addition, if you went to the height that would give them similar but not the same coverage, that tower would need to go to 210 feet and wouldn't be designed as a stealth facility such as ours that could house three carriers in the County of Santa Cruz. It would need a new use permit. Our site is not visible from a public view shed, whereas the Patrick Road site is. It is the least intrusive site that is designed for three carriers in the County of Santa Cruz. Our partner, AT&amp;T, has an agreement with FirstNet. This will provide the community emergency services and critical communications. FirstNet currently does not have coverage in the area. This site would provide needed coverage from an emergency perspective. This site also has battery backup and generator backup. So in times of power outages, the site would still be functional and provide those necessary communications. And then lastly, I'd like to state that not only do we have support of FirstNet and the County of Santa Cruz, we also have support from the Greater Bonny Dune Housing Association, who has submitted a second letter of support. I know in these situations, I've built many towers in the state of California. The immediate residents are not happy with the tower, but the greater community is. It provides necessary and critical communications for the community. Thank you.
Next, Peter, answer additional map. You'd like to submit the record.
Good morning, Chairperson Hernandez and Board of Supervisors. My name is Young Sa. I'm Associate Director for Radio Access Network.
Can you bring the mic down so we can hear you?
Is this better?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Let me start from the beginning. Good morning, Chairperson Hernandez and Board of Supervisors. My name is Young Sa, and I'm an Associate Director of Radio Access Network Engineering here at AT&amp;T. I bring 33 years of experience in ran access network, and I'll hold two patents in radio interference mitigations and in passive intermodulation. I'm here to discuss need for new sites in Bonny Dune. I have observed there's been multiple arguments about the coverage predictions, with some believing that AT&amp;T does not need coverage enhancement. And I'm here to assure you that AT&amp;T have analyzed the data. And we have the need for a significant coverage gap closure. And with the traditional analysis, multiple analysis, we have determined that TCI Tower will close that significant gap in coverage. AT&amp;T utilizes ATOL propagation tool, which uses Ester propagation model. The advantage of Ester lies in accuracy. It integrates height resolution terrain data, i.e. five meters or 10 meters resolution compared to FCC's 10-meter resolution requirements, as well as detailed clutter data, like including foliage and building database. This leads to more precise signal modeling. And FCC uses what's called this Longley Rice model, which primarily considers terrain obstructions. Now, both models are efficient and effective, but the key difference between Longley Rice and Ester model is the data that goes in to predict the propagation. The standard deviation for Ester modeling is about 6.5 dB, whereas Longley Rice's standard deviation range is from eight to 12 dB. Just to put this in perspective, what does that mean? It is, you know, like if there's a 6 dB of difference, that equates about 60 or 50% difference in coverage. So there's could be a dramatic difference in a free space loss. Now, difference between the FCC and AT&amp;T coverage map provides them from difference in modeling approaches and various resolution of data, terrain data, and clutter input. Furthermore, FCC map shows in-vehicle on LTE for AT&amp;T network, it shows there's no coverage in Empire Grade, as well as many parts of Bonny Dune. And when also, when you look generally examine the FCC map, it also has noted the disclaimer, which states, "Coverage maps are based on propagation modeling, and actual on-ground experience may vary." Empirical data remains the gold standards for carriers, and we use that to identify significant gap, which we have done in Bonny Dune. As also, we have crowdsource data that is available to public. When you look at crowdsource data like Okula and Sound Map, it also confirms that there is a significant coverage gap, which is consistent with our findings. In conclusion, we should objectively objectively assess need for coverage and use empirical data to identify this significant significant gap in coverage. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today, and I welcome any questions you may have.
We have Kevin Nada with FirstNet on the line. If we could bring him in.
Kevin, as a panelist, you should be able to mute and unmute yourself.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Chair and members of the board, my name is Kevin Nida. I'm a Senior Public Safety Advisor with the U.S. Department of Commerce, First Responder Network Authority. Came to Department of Commerce with 35 years of fire service and paramedic experience. Responded to scores of wildfires, weather events, was part of our urban search and rescue team for over 20 years. And on every major event, coverage is an issue. The importance of coverage and firefighter safety, public safety, safety cannot be understated. Coverage in this area would have significantly supported the 2020 CZU Lightning Complex Fire that affected the Bonny Dune area, where it was part of the loss of 1,490 structures. So FirstNet is different. It's a public safety ban on band 14 that supports public safety, and that can be cleared for exclusive use during emergencies for FirstNet users. Whatever the mission, FirstNet users have prioritized high-secure access to the network, and this site will have band 14 installed in it. Currently, there are nearly 30,000 public safety agencies and organizations across the country subscribe to FirstNet. We have over 7 million devices on the network. AT&amp;T has built over 2.99 million square miles of coverage across urban, suburban, rural, territory, and tribal areas, with 20,000 square miles of terrestrial wireless coverage added just in this last year. 99% of America's first responders are covered by FirstNet, so it's really important to get coverage in Bonny Dune. It's not just who lives there. They're very, very important, but it's also who's going to respond to help them. In 2024 alone, the FirstNet Authority, which manages the contract with AT&amp;T, had more than 1,400 engagements of public safety, reaching more than 53,000 first responders and key stakeholders. So the input that we get is coverage, 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 and reliability. In 2025, 1,000 new cell sites were added for public safety across the country. And over the last five years, the state of California received its own more than 1,000 cell sites. These new cell sites are equipped with band 14, giving first responders this always-on priority and preemption privilege. The vast majority of these enhance coverage for public safety locations like fire stations, police departments, courthouses, and hospitals. And this means that public safety now has coverage capacity and dedicated spectrum in more areas, and as well, their mobile devices can transmit six times the power of a regular handheld or commercial device. So it increases the range as well. AT&amp;T in 2024 announced with the FirstNet Authority a 10-year, $8 billion investment into FirstNet. So we're not done. This is an important site, and I would ask for an eye vote. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. I'd just like to thank staff and the board once again for your time and all the voluminous materials you've had to review as part of this application. I was kind of amazed going back through it myself at how how much we've, how many letters you've gotten from me. So I apologize for that. I'll try not to drone on too long today. I'd like to start by reiterating that the Telecommunications Act of 1996 was adapted to address scenarios just like this. Facilities like the Instant Project, which seek to provide new or improved wireless coverage, are vital to meet the modern communication needs of the broader community, including emergency communications. Because these facilities are always opposed by nearby residents, the Act constrains local agencies' ability to deny towers like this one, even in the face of vocal opposition from neighbors. Project opponents and the Planning Commission failed to rebut the showing made by the applicant pursuant to the 2009 Ninth Circuit case, T-Mobile versus the City of Anna Cortez, that AT&amp;T has identified a significant gap in their coverage, and the manner in which they propose to close that gap is the least intrusive means available. Because the record shows there is no technologically feasible, less intrusive alternative, if the board were to deny the application today, such application would result in an unlawful prohibition on the provision of wireless services under the Act. AT&amp;T has indeed demonstrated that it has a significant gap in its service coverage using the precise industry-standard tools carriers use to design wireless networks. The gap in coverage is evidenced by an RF statement certified by a professional RF engineer, detailed propagation maps, and empirical drive test data and mapping. Young, AT&amp;T's engineer who you just heard from, also submitted an additional map demonstrating using crowdsourced data that there is nonexistent and very poor coverage in the gap area. As I've already mentioned to you, courts have consistently held these tools, not the high-level maps cited by project opponents or the appropriate ones to determine whether significant gaps in coverage exists. Federal law has grown increasingly deferential to wireless carriers and the determination of whether a significant gap in coverage exists. In 2023, the county rewrote its wireless code, as Sheila mentioned, to mimic this deferential standard in federal law. And in doing so, it defined a significant gap as a gap in a wireless provider's own wireless service that is significant as certified by the wireless carrier. Here, the county code directs the board to rely on AT&amp;T certification that a significant gap exists, not project opponents unsubstantiated arguments otherwise. Despite this clear direction, project opponents have tried to obscure the law on facts by citing the three high-level mapping tools that are not intended for and not appropriately relied on to design wireless networks. Both the wireless marketing maps and FCC wireless maps opponent sites are, in their own words, "high-level approximations of coverage." As Young mentioned, they do not take into account granular site-specific conditions like terrain, clutter, and building data that are especially important to identify indoor and in-vehicle coverage gaps in hilly, forested areas like the surrounding, like that area surrounding the proposed facility. We've already discussed the marketing maps and why those are inaccurate. I'll just quote from the FCC Broadman maps on their website. Quote, "The LTE coverage map depicts the coverage a customer can expect to receive when outdoors and stationary. It is not meant to reflect where service is available when a user is indoors or in a moving vehicle." And a user's, quote, "Any user's actual on-the-ground experience may vary due to factors such as the end-user's device, cell site capacity, and terrain." And even if we were to accept that the FCC maps are appropriate to design wireless facilities, as Sheila mentioned, they show that there is no in-vehicle or indoor coverage within the gap area. Therefore, the FCC maps confirm and do not refute AT&amp;T's significant gap showing. I'm also going to briefly discuss the Carrier of Last Resort mapping that's included in the opposition materials. This mapping is based on the availability of an industry-wide agglomeration of multiple providers and their voice alternatives, including wireline voice over internet protocol and fixed mobile wireless. So it doesn't focus on AT&amp;T's coverage. It is irrelevant to the analysis at hand. The applicant demonstrated that there are no less intrusive alternative locations or means by which it could close its significant gap in coverage. Project opponents have repeatedly pointed to satellite or small cell technologies as feasible alternatives. First of all, federal court decisions and the FCC have made clear that local governments may not require deployment of a specific technology to close a gap because the FCC has exclusive authority over technical aspects of wireless communications, and that dates back to a 1997 FCC order. And as Scott already discussed, small cell and satellite alternatives are not feasible here, even if the county were able to lawfully require them. AT&amp;T's comprehensive alternatives analysis confirms that there are no technologically feasible and less intrusive alternative sites to locate a similar tower. AT&amp;T has consistently ruled out the Patrick Road site, starting back in 2020, and the record contains voluminous evidence confirming this conclusion. As Scott mentioned, the Patrick Road tower lacks the structural characteristics to support its wireless antenna array, and that means an entirely new tower would need to be approved and then constructed, going through the same process that we're going through today. I'll just reiterate the portion of your code that Sheila already mentioned. One of the findings necessary for approval of a height exception for a placement tower at Patrick Road under the county code is that there are no less visually obstructive alternatives. This finding can't be made because a less visually abusive alternative exists, and you're considering it today. So again, I know I stated this in the last hearing, based on the record before the board and the showing made by the applicant, the only way the county could deny the project is if it showed that there were some potentially available and technologically feasible alternatives. and technologically feasible alternatives. As staff and the zoning administrator have consistently agreed, project opponents have not done so here. County code and federal law direct the board to approve the project. And just briefly to conclude, as I've already mentioned in the last hearing, neither the commission's denial nor any of the material submitted by project opponents set forth substantial evidence sufficient to deny the project. And even if the county could identify a reason to disapprove the project under its code, it could not do so because it is preempted by the Act from effectively prohibiting wireless services. Based on the record before the county, including the alternatives analysis prepared by AT&amp;T, denying the project based on the county code would amount to an unlawful prohibition on the provision of wireless services. So to conclude, we request that the board accept staff's recommendation, grant this appeal, and approve the project.
Thank you for the presentation. We'll now turn to the organized group proposing the application, the Bonny Doon residents for responsible cell coverage, represented by attorneys Gary Patton and Robert J. Berg, for no more than 20 minutes.
No more than 20 minutes. Thank you, Mr. Chairperson and board members. I am Gary Patton, and I am not the primary attorney on this. Mr. Berg is, and a very knowledgeable person. I have been called in because he's in New York. He thought maybe it'd be better to have a real person here. And certainly, what you have just heard from your staff and the applicant seems like there's no argument against this. In fact, there is a very substantial and important one, which I hope your board will, in fact, ultimately decide is the correct argument. What we're going to do with our time is to hear first, and I believe he's queued up to show up on your screen, Dr. Kent Chamberlain, really a worldwide authority. And then we're going to hear from the local people, Tim Richards, who's helped bring together the opposition and done a lot of work on this, including contracting with the attorney and the engineer. And then finally, we're going to hear from Robert Berg, the attorney, who's in New York. Again, I think he's queued up. I think you're going to find that things are substantiated, and if we don't use 20 minutes, we'll reserve our time for the final pitch to you after you hear from anybody who's here on the public hearing. And thank you again to all board members for taking this seriously. There really is a serious concern here. So this is, yeah. Mr. Chamberlain. Don't run our time while you're queuing him up, please.
Okay. My name is Dr. Kent Chamberlain. I'm professor and chair emeritus of the Department of Electrical and Computer Engineering at the University of New Hampshire, with over 40 years of experience studying how radio waves propagate in real-world environments. I've advised federal agencies, chaired research panels, and served as associate editor for the IEEE Transactions on Antennas and Propagation, our field's top journal. I'm here to provide you today with a brief overview of the June 4 report that I submitted to you. I was asked to review the evidence submitted by AT&amp;T and CTI Towers in support of their proposal to build a 140-foot monopine cell tower at the 186 Summit Drive in Bonny Doon. So and after a thorough review, my expert opinion is that there is no technical justification for this tower. And here are my five reasons for coming to this conclusion. First, there is no evidence of a significant gap in coverage, contrary to what you've heard just a moment ago. AT&amp;T claims there's a gap in 4G LTE service, and they've provided computer-generated coverage maps to support that claim. They don't disclose, or at least they haven't up to this point, disclosed in their report what model was used, nor did they provide other information regarding to the modeling process. Now, as an expert in radio wave propagation modeling, I can tell you such information matters enormously. If you don't know what they put into the model or how they modeled it, you are simply getting basically a Rorschach test when you look at their results. In a similar manner, the outdated drive test data provided by AT&amp;T to justify the tower only presents the data measured and does not document how the measurements were performed. This is particularly relevant because the AT&amp;T drive test data do not agree with recent citizen-collected data, as I'll mention shortly. Even more concerning, AT&amp;T has provided no dropped-call logs, and that is the gold standard for proving that actual coverage gaps exist. Without those logs, the claim of a significant gap is unsubstantiated. My second point is that residents confirm that coverage does exist in the purported gap regions. Community members have documented with photo and video evidence that they can make calls, send texts, and stream data in their vehicles in the exact areas where AT&amp;T claims that no coverage exists. This lived experience directly contradicts the company's claims. Keep in mind that model results are only estimates. It's the old map and the territory thing, where measured data is the real thing. In addition, model results given are only estimates of coverage by one tower at a time and do not include the coverage contribution of other towers in the vicinity. So I've reviewed the drive test data collected by Leif Muller, Brian Smith, and Tim Richards, and they used three different AT&amp;T phones, including one on FirstNet, and find both the results and the methodology for their measurements to be credible. They clearly show in-vehicle mobile coverage throughout the Summit Drive, Empire Grade, and Alba Road regions in the gap area. My third point is that the AT&amp;T-reported data shows that coverage is robust in the region. And I make this statement based upon the FCC's National Broadband Map, which uses coverage data submitted by the provider where it's unlawful. It's unlawful for the provider to present erroneous data. FCC map shows that AT&amp;T already provides 80% to 100% mobile broadband coverage in the area around the proposed tower. This finding is consistent with what residents are reporting. Now, I should note that if you look at the FCC broadband map, you may have to expand it to get really granular, but you'll see in the homes or at each home location, it is reporting that you do have in-vehicle broadband coverage. My fourth point relates to AT&amp;T's filing to the state of California, which contradicts their claims of a coverage gap. In that filing to the California Public Utilities Commission, AT&amp;T requested to be released from its less lucrative landline service applications in Bonny Doon, claiming its more lucrative wireless network is already sufficient to replace those landlines. It appears that AT&amp;T is telling one government agency its wireless network is strong enough to drop landlines and then tell the board, "Tell this board that its network is weak and needs a massive new tower." That's a clear contradiction. And my fifth and last point relates to a less intrusive alternative site. Even if we assume that coverage needs to be improved, although evidence suggests otherwise, there is an existing 150-foot tower on Patrick Road just 1,000 feet away from the proposed site. AT&amp;T dismissed that site based upon the results from the same undocumented modeling process I referred to earlier. The maps for the two sites show comparable predicted coverage, and the difference in modeled results is likely within the 6 to 8 dB margin of error, decibels, and its logarithmic scale. It is typical of even the best propagation models that were referenced earlier. Using the existing tower on Patrick Road would meet the standards of a less intrusive means by which is required by law, federal law. Inclusion, federal law requires that new towers be allowed only if there is a significant gap in coverage and that there is no less intrusive alternative means for filling that gap. As you've just heard in my review, shows that no significant gap has been proven and that a viable alternative does exist. Consequently, there is no technical basis to override the commission's denial of the proposed site. I urge you to reject their proposal and protect the integrity of your rural community. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak.
Dear supervisors, thank you for taking the time today to see, hear, touch, and comprehend the evidence about the proposed 150-foot monopine cell tower in the center of our residential neighborhood. If approved, this tower could and would raise an additional 20 feet without input from the county or residents under the Spectrum Act. Two professional drone flights confirmed that the tower would be visible for Empire Grade at this extended height. If approved, this would become the tallest tower in a residential neighborhood in all of Santa Cruz County, creating a dangerous precedent to allow giant cell towers in residential neighborhoods in extremely close proximity to homes, potentially as close as 20 feet away, given updated setbacks through the county code, which is dangerous to people living in a rural residential zoning and would effectively make this designation meaningless. This tower cannot be allowed, either under the Telecommunications Act of 1996 or under the county code for three main reasons. One, as Kent just explained, there is no gap in coverage. AT&amp;T provided carrier-certified presence of coverage to the FCC under penalty of perjury that it has outdoor-stationary mobile coverage throughout this entire region. Never once in their application have CTI or AT&amp;T stated a need for in-vehicle mobile coverage. We searched the entire history on public record. The mini packet in front of you today is the first instance where this idea was introduced by staff, not by the applicant. Secondly, there was a flawed SEQUA review that did not seriously take into account the devastating impacts of prolific monotime plastic pollution, which you can see in the gallery here. And thirdly, even if you disagree with the above, there are at least four viable alternative sites with less impact, three of which have not been evaluated sufficiently with evidence for denial: 333 Robles, Crest Ranch at 12500 Empire Grade, and McDermott Station, currently under negotiation with the county for a 150-foot tower for AT&amp;T. And one of which was not evaluated honestly, 125 Patrick Road. Today, we present to you our evidence, as well as our legal and expert witness to support you in denying this application with impunity. Please find our suggested findings for denial in the packet that I handed you. My neighbors and I have spent over $80,000 and countless hundreds of hours over the past three years that we've been fighting this. We had to go out of pocket for this because county staff failed to perform its duty to obtain independent scientists and experts to do the analysis for the county at the applicants, sorry, at the applicants, as the county code expressly provides they need to do. Therefore, we had to become citizen scientists and run testing ourselves to make sure it was done right. We designed our test with input from Dr. Chamberlain to ensure that our results were well-documented and repeatable. My neighbors Brian Smith, Leif Muller, and I ran three drive tests using three different AT&amp;T phones, one of which was operated on FirstNet. In a painstaking drive test process that took us many hours to complete and document with photo and video, we made a total of 106 calls, 102 of which were successful, which gave us a success rate of 96.2%. This includes Leif's in-vehicle calls documented by video emailed to the board this morning, along with those in the spreadsheet that you have in the packet in front of you. Our data shows extensive in-vehicle AT&amp;T coverage throughout Empire Grade, Summit Drive, Alba Road, and even on Conifer Lane and Vic Drive. These findings debunk both the November 2023 AT&amp;T propagation map showing no coverage at all and their drive test, which Kent pointed out the flaws of. Our data conclusively proved that there is abundant in-vehicle mobile coverage available in this region, in contrast to what AT&amp;T says in its own reporting, and in contrast to the data that ATT has provided to the FCC concerning a lack of in-vehicle mobile coverage. Even the FCC knows that carriers can submit inaccurate data because it's all based on fallible digital modeling. The real world is very much more complex and often different. It requires local knowledge that's specific in order to ascertain through lived experience. Thankfully, unlike AT&amp;T, they acknowledge the fallibility at the FCC of the carrier's propagation maps and allow residents to directly challenge the carrier's reported coverage. On the same type of the website where you can see a supposed gap in in-vehicle mobile coverage for AT&amp;T, there's a link where you can click "Mobile Challenge", which takes you to a page called "How to Use the New FCC Mobile Speed Test App to Challenge Mobile Coverage." It explains that these maps reflect where subscribers should be able to receive mobile connectivity when indoors or in a moving vehicle. These maps do not display indoor coverage in homes. Now, the emphasis there is on "should." It's not always correct, as we've proven with our data. I'm going to stop there and reserve the time for Attorney Bob Berg.
Good morning, supervisors. Thank you very much for holding this de novo hearing. Mr. Richards has not presented his evidence on the monopine problem, so let me address that first. You've seen in the back, and I believe he's given you packets, of the monopine debris that he's gathered at my direction from four monopine towers in your immediate area. One of the findings that the county is urging is that if you build this monopine tower, there won't be any environmental impact from this tower. Now, that's complete and utter nonsense. I've done this a lot of times, and every single monopine in the country that I've examined sheds prodigious amounts of PVC plastic fake pine needles. You can see someone in the front here holding up a little branch with the fake pine needles on it. Those will fall off or be blown off or detach from every single fake pine tree cell tower in the country. And this monopine tower is going to be in a harsh environment up at the top of Summit Drive where the winds can go up to 90 miles an hour. Temperatures variations are harsh. You have high UV exposure up there. What happens is these fake pine needles become very brittle. They fragment, they fall off, they're going to get blown from here to God knows where. They're going to wind up in the soil. They're going to get blown into San Vincent Creek in that area. They're going to wind up in your watershed. They break into very, very small particles, and they do become microplastics. Now, the county, it's shocking to me that the county environmental person who did this SEQUA study is only evidence that this is not going to be environmentally harmful is the reliance on a purported study used in a case where, I brought this to the Board of Governors' attention in Lake Tahoe, Verizon commissioned a, quote, "study" from litigation consultants, and they wrote up this nonsensical report saying, which was adopted by your county coordinator as facts, saying, "Oh, these things don't degrade. PVC is not a hazardous substance," which is not true, by the way. My report, my rejoinder to that, shows scientific articles showing that it is hazardous. The point here is there will be literally thousands of pounds of PVC material, and mostly in the form of these fake pine needles that are going to be on this monopine tree, and much of that will be, fall off the tree within a year or two maximum and wind up in your environment up there, polluting the hell out of the place. This is solid waste, illegal solid waste dumping. It's a crime to do that, and it's going to be blown off-site. It's not recoverable because these particles break off and they blow with the wind all over the place. And when you have your atmospheric rivers coming through with these heavy rains, it's going to go into the drainage basins, wind up in the creeks, and that stuff is never going to be recovered. So there's no way to prevent this massive pollution. This is an environmental time bomb that you would be permitting. And to just write it off as the Ms. McLean has done here as, "Oh, there's no evidence of environmental impact from this," is complete and utter nonsense. So that's with monopines. You should be very, very hesitant to ever consider approving a monopine tower. And from the four towers that Mr. Richards went to, he picked up this crop, I call it, from every single one. And the base of every tower is a massive debris field, and that happens every place in the country, every monopine that I've ever had investigated. Now, the applicant here has the burden of proof, and they have not met that burden. We've introduced very substantial evidence, much better quality evidence than the applicant has proposed. I'm not going to go into weighing the evidence, but here you have Dr. Chamberlain, a world-renowned expert in the field, who's explained why the evidence AT&amp;T has produced is flawed and should not be relied upon by you, who are the tarizer of fact. There is no gap in coverage here, as is... There is no gap in coverage here, as is demonstrated by the drive test, which Mr. Richards performed, which is the best evidence of all because it's real-world data. And the fact that AT&amp;T is telling the FCC in the data that it provides for the National Broadband Map that it has full coverage here and has told the California Public Utilities Commission, "Oh, we don't need to have hardwired service anymore because we have great coverage with wireless." Those are contradictory positions. Under law, they're saying this to the government agencies. And to you, they're saying, "Oh, we have terrible coverage. We need a cell tower here." And we're not going to bother using an existing 150-foot tower that Mr. Kaufman has on his property 1,000 feet away, mostly because they want to put it on CTI's tower. And why? Because CTA is a cell tower developer, and it wants to put not just AT&amp;T's antennas on the tower. It wants to put two other cellular companies. It makes its money by renting tower space to other wireless carriers. So this is a money play for CTI. It's not just to provide AT&amp;T coverage. It's to make money for CTI, which bought the land about 10 years ago and let the existing tower rot and allowed all sorts of zoning code violations to occur or code violations to amass on that land, which the county just let.
Thank you. That is a time the ringer.
I'm sorry?
Went off. Can I see by show of hands how many people are going to comment? Okay, we do have. Well, I'm going to limit the time to one minute, considering we had 20-minute presentations from both the applicant and the organized opposition. So if there's anyone who wishes to speak on this item, please come up.
I'd like to speak, but as the property owner at 125 Patrick, I'm hoping you'd grant me a little more than the one minute.
I think you probably should have been part of the presentation if you're the owner. It's one minute for everybody.
I was not invited to present as that property owner, so.
I did. One minute, please. Continue. May the timer start.
Well, my name's Matthew Kaufman. My wife and I own the 125 Patrick Road Tower. We own that property where the existing 150-foot tower stands. I'm here primarily to answer any questions about that parcel or the existing tower that might come up. While I believe our tower is superior to the proposed tower for the upcoming next-gen county radio system, I do agree with AT&amp;T and fully support their application at 186 Summit. I'm not a fan of monopines, but I think it's an improvement over what's there now. But even if AT&amp;T could or wanted to use our tower, it would trigger exactly the same opposition that you're seeing here today. I've lived this battle. After the CZU tower fire destroyed our tower, it cost us $100,000 and years of time, and we still can't get an electrical permit there to power back up the cameras. We still can't get an electrical permit there to power back up the ham radio gear. And again, I have another minute of information, but you've cut me off.
Thank you. Through the chair, I want to see if we can maybe do a minute and a half. I mean, all these people have come up, come out here today, taking time off of work. And, you know, we could have shuffled the agenda around a little bit, but I think at a minimum, a minute and a half for the residents because it's going to have a major impact on this community.
I think we had an hour of presentation, and then we have probably an additional hour and a half here if we do a minute and a half. We do have 30, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, right, like 25 speakers.
I think there's a lot of folks. This is really important. I have a lot of folks in our district, and that's true.
One minute. Please continue.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is David Wodkowski. I'm a resident and business owner in Santa Cruz County. I'm here today to speak in support of the tower. Normally, I do expert witness work for these. I probably do about three to four dozen of these a year. I would normally have a lot to say about Dr. Chamberlain's report, et cetera, et cetera. In the minute that I have, I'm going to ask you to consider exactly one question. And that question is this: Based upon the fact that it will cost CTI and AT&amp;T probably $1 million to build this tower, if there's no gap in coverage, why are they investing that money? If I invested $1 million in a company to do something that's not necessary, I would be fired. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for hearing us, Supervisors. The problem here, so my name is Rodney Cahill. I live immediately next door to the property. And the problem here is 150-foot giant commercial development doesn't belong in the center of a residential neighborhood and absolutely like next door and overhanging out home. Giant towers belong on like distant peaks that are far from, they're separate from homes and where people live 24/7. And so that's the problem. A win-win situation here is for AT&amp;T to put small coffee can-sized repeaters on all the existing power poles in Bonny Dune. And they're distributed throughout Bonny Dune. It defeats the terrain concerns because you have line of sight to the roadways. The power's already on the poles. The communications is already on the poles. And there's transformers already on the poles. One more little can is not going to provide as much of an impact as a 150-foot tower with generators and all the rest of it. So, thank you.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. Thank you for taking our time. My name is Shannon Kemble, and I reside at 98 Summit Drive. I'm a retired firefighter of 38, 35 years, and I'm in the process of rebuilding my home lost in the CZU fires. As early as 2004, the International Association of Firefighters came out with a report banning cellular towers on fire stations. In fact, Kevin Nida, who spoke earlier for FirstNet, fought against cellular towers on fire stations for the California Fire Service Association, which represents CAL FIRE. Interesting to say, a firefighter lives about one-third of their life at the fire station. We are going to live under this for 24 hours, seven days a week, in a rural residential neighborhood. I understand the Telecommunications Act, and it says you cannot consider medical issues and exposures, but that is over almost 30 years old. And as politicians, we know in terms of corporations, using Vistra as an example in Moss Landing, they can provide politicians to say that their facility is safe, and we know that wasn't true. And it lifted that research.
Hi, my name is Riley Smith, and I don't want the cell tower here. I have many reasons on why, but one of the major reasons is all the microplastics. The microplastics are a huge threat to our environment in various different ways. And some of the few effects that I'm really worried about are the habitat disruption and loss and the impact it has on our native biotic wildlife. While you may think that making a cell tower look like a tree is good because it's less of an eyesore, it really isn't. Having a cell tower resemble an innocent animal's habitat is really dangerous. This causes an abundance of harmed or even killed animals who believe that are, or animals that are home tier. Back to the microplastics, I can't, like, I seriously can't even begin to explain how I feel about them. These plastics can be inhaled or eaten by my little brother, our dogs, our cats, goats, or any wildlife in this area, and it can leave long-lasting health defects. Bonny Dune is a really natural area. We have preserves, we have trails, and I don't want these trails to be destroyed because I love where I live, and I hope it stays that way. I hope you see why I believe the cell tower should not be used. Thank you for your time.
My name is Craigan. I believe that the Shell Tower should not be built because the animals such as dogs, cats, or any animal for this reason. Although making it look like a tree is smart, it is, it takes away from the, it like, it like brings out microplastics. Microplastics can harm many animals and plants. Plants call this place home. Having this would be a threat to them. This place is, this place is where people live. So the cell tower should be built where not a lot of people live. And the big, like, people go here to get away from like the big cities, and they don't want like cell towers and stuff here. And it makes, and it's also very disturbing. Like, they make lots of noise, and they disturb animals and people. I hope you agree with me on why the cell tower should not be built. Thank you for your time.
Hello, thank you for hearing us. My name is Frank Murphy. I'm a real estate broker. I've sold over 400 properties in Santa Cruz, more than half of them in Bonny Dune. Cell towers, nobody buys a house or a property because it's close to a cell tower. Cell tower locations are always perceived by buyers as detrimental. All utility installations, particularly if you can see them from a distance, decrease property values. In fact, I had a property two doors away from this cell tower location in escrow in 2022. The seller informed us of AT&amp;T's plans to develop the parcel. Immediately the next day, my clients canceled the escrow, and subsequently, the property was sold at a fair discount to somebody else. So cell tower locations are deleterious to property values, and I think that's an important consideration. Thank you.
Morning, Supervisors and Staff. My name's Chelsea Richards. I'm on Summit Drive, 900 feet from the proposed tower site. I just want to talk about the big picture of cell service in Bonny Dune because if you look at the whole picture of it, putting a cell tower right here is like putting a Band-Aid on totally healthy skin when the whole body's bleeding out everywhere else. So what we've, as our neighborhood, have proven is that this area is covered. We're good. We don't need it. And your job is to protect us from getting too many towers in our area. So you've got two stuff, two things going on here. We've got, one, there is no gap in coverage. Two, there's an alternative site that Matthew Kaufman here is saying has the infrastructure is ready to go and is already a visible eyesore. So what Sheila brought up earlier is not even applicable because the visual impact, yeah, it's already there in our neighborhood. We can see his tower that stands 150 feet tall already in our neighborhood. So adding another tower would create the new visual impact. Thank you.
You lower the mic for him.
My name is Peter Young. My wife is Alberta Young. I came here in 1948, pristine area. I chose to live in Bonny Dune, and my, I've got lot 29, 20, an Empire Grade, Summit Park subdivision, and I moved here. My wife built the house when we were, in 1954, it got burned down in the fire. But we want to live up there. We don't need a cell tower right behind our property. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Calvin Smith. I'm a retired county employee, 35 years with Public Works, 25 years with Public Works Engineering. It's been, information given that he was trying to rebuild this tower a while back. And then now, all of a sudden, the codes and the setbacks are being twisted around so that they can approve these things. I just, you know, I need you to check into that. Why were these things changed around? And it's within the middle of, I have a family that has property in that area right next to this tower. And you don't want to put a tower next to these people's homes. That's just not right. Okay, that's just, doesn't make sense. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Darian Martin, resident of Santa Cruz. I'm here today because I was notified of this meeting by Tim and Chelsea Richards, who I admire very much for caring for our community and caring for our land. We live in a very special place, and I too care deeply for the health of this community and this land. I see the motivations of the phone, the people who spoke from the phone companies as largely being money, if not all, of the top motivation. I see the motivations of the people speaking being the health of our community with the threat of these microplastics and these radio frequencies. And I'm asking you, as our city council, to support life and to support health and to support our community. Thank you.
I guess this is all blown out of the water. My name's Jerry Jenkins. I've lived with my wife up on Summit Drive, right kitty corner from this tower for almost 50 years. I don't understand if there's coverage, why this tower has to go there. I don't understand why the zoning department has changed the zoning so that they can put a tower there where six months ago they couldn't. You know, I don't, there's so much I just don't understand. It just doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever, what's going on with the environment and everything else that's going on. I don't know what else to say. My notes became worthless about five minutes ago.
Good morning. My name is Julie Cahill. I live immediately south of this proposed tower. For nearly a decade now, we've looked at it out our bedroom window, and CTI has left obsolete unmaintained equipment acknowledged by the county as both a fire hazard and eyesore. Yet nothing changes. I've contacted code enforcement, zoning, my supervisor, only to be told the solution is a new permit that would supersede the original one, which we found after Jerry pointed out. He's already been down this path with lawyers. Not to construct any future additions to the facility with exceptions of those that reduce the number, height, or area of existing antenna. This proposal increases all three. These were legally negotiated conditions paid for by neighbors, yet the counties failed to enforce them. I don't know why. And now we're here again, forced to hire legal counsel and defend what's already in writing. Meanwhile, over the holidays, staff quietly slashed 750-foot setback to 20 with no public notice, and the handout at the following meetings listed no change. Please do not let this, this is not planning. This is negligence. Please make this right. Deny the permit. Thank you.
Chair, would we be willing to ask the audience to hold their applause? I want to make sure that everybody in the audience has the opportunity to speak and feels welcome to speak. And sometimes when there's a group applause, it might make others feel like they can't speak up.
Yes, please. If we can alternate with maybe spirit fingers or something like that, or the leaves, the microplastics.
Hello, my name is Brian. I'm a first responder. I have FirstNet. My phone was used to make the phone calls in the supposed area that has zero cell coverage. My FirstNet actually had better service than my wife, who just has regular AT&amp;T. So I was able to make more phone calls than she was. Also, as a first responder, egress and those are things that are huge issues that in any kind of responses goes on, if this tower were to fall, that would be blocked on either one side or the other side of the road. Also, to go with communication in any kind of emergency setting, you can ask anybody in here that's a first responder, EMS, any of that stuff. The number one problem is communication. I went down to LA, communication was the problem. The solution, not relevant here, but it was Starlink. It was satellite. Because communication and infrastructure are always the first things that go down. There's always a bottleneck in there. Not everybody can use their cellphone in an emergency. Not everybody could use a landline in an emergency. There's not enough emergency responders as well. Mr. Kaufman has been trying to rebuild his tower to the same height that it was, and he's having issues with that. Now we're having a new tower that seems like things are getting changed around so that that one can get built and not help him. He's reached out to AT&amp;T with no response also. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bobby Smith. I'm a Realtor. I've been working in Santa Cruz County for over 15 years, helping buyers and sellers buy and sell homes in the county. I have sold homes up in the Bonny Dune. I have sold homes up in the Bonny Doon area. And I went online to the National Association of Realtors and the California Association of Realtors and checked their research on people that have cell phone towers near their homes. And it was stated there that they could lose as much as ten to twenty percent of the value of their home because there was a cell phone tower nearby. They also had done research to buyers that are looking for property and people that are renting. And they found that seventy-nine percent of them would not buy within a few blocks of a tower. And when a person goes to sell a home in Santa Cruz County, they have to fill out a seller's disclosure statement that tells that a cell phone tower is nearby. So when a buyer goes to look at those disclosures, they decide whether they want to go through with the purchase. And most of the time, ninety-nine percent of the time, they will not go if they know that there's a cell phone tower nearby because of the detriment to their families. And I was also one of the recipients of the call from Brian Smith, and I live in Santa Cruz while they were doing their call. And I was able to talk to them on every single call. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Erica Cassidy. And I voted you all into office here to represent me. So thank you. I'm a Bonny Doon resident. I'm a mother and a permaculture landscaper. I do not have cell service at all. We have very minimal internet service. And I like it that way. I like it that way. That's why I live there. If I wanted twenty-four hour access, I would live in town. We, we love our nature. We love being rural and we find a way when we want to connect. Um, I do want to mention the pollinators. We notice, um, we have scientific evidence that the bees are in trouble and they don't return home. Um, they're having trouble with their navigation systems. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon. My name is Bernard Wippe, and I do not want this cell tower to be built. People live in Bonny Doon because of its beautiful, peaceful natural habitat. And they don't want this beautiful neighborhood to be destroyed permanently by direction of a horrendous tower. So therefore I would ask you, great, respectfully, to reject this proposal outright. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is John Black. I'm here to speak in opposition to the communication towers, uh, communication tower on Summit Drive. There are several considerable concerns related to the placement of this tower in a residential neighborhood. Not the least of which is the danger of radiation to the families and residents. The dangers of cellular radiation have been identified by the medical community and the International Association of Firefighters. As presented in multiple medical studies, these dangers include headaches, extreme fatigue, sleep disruption, depression, anxiety, disorientation, memory lapses, and occupational cancer. And are significant enough that the International Association of Firefighters has made repeated national recommendations to not allow the placement of cell towers on fire stations due to severely elevated cancer risk. Given this concern, why would you consider placing a high-powered tower in a residential neighborhood? Should the Summit Drive residents develop cancer or health issues related to the tower? Will the county be providing medical care and own the long-term effects of the tower on their health? I ask you keep in mind that these are the same residents to which you are accountable, not the phone companies. The second part, while I still have a little bit of time, I'm out. Well, thank you.
Good day. I'm Dana Schlick and a new mother and, um, good friends of Chelsea and Tim Richards. And, um, I go up to their land often and me and other women and their children deeply love the respite actually from all of the influence of Tower Signal. I live in town. I deeply appreciate Tower Signal, and there's a time and place for where to, um, be free of it. And I've also been alerted that, um, wireless communication facilities are prohibited in four other types of residential areas in our county, like my own neighborhood, just a couple of blocks away. Single-family residential, multifamily residential, single-family ocean beach residential, and mobile home parks. However, they're proposing that this tower be built in a resi- highly residential area that already has coverage. Thank you so much.
I'm Anne McKenzie, and I live at six, six, five Summit Drive for thirty-eight years. We were destroyed in the CZU fire. We chose to stay and rebuild. Summit Drive is an exceptional, unique, and very special place. The proposed cell tower at a hundred and fifty feet is the equivalent of a thirteen-story building. The tower would be twice as tall as all the new high-rises in downtown Santa Cruz. That is intimidating and not acceptable in a rural residential neighborhood. We are welcoming new neighbors and families with children and babies into our communities. CTI and AT&T are a two-point-five-billion-dollar out-of-state organization. They don't need one more cell tower centered in our residential community. We voted for you supervisors to represent us. The people of Santa Cruz County are asking for your help, support, and follow-through. We chose community over corporations and people over profit. Thank you.
Hello, I am Dr. Sarah Blackstorm-Atton. My family and I own and reside, um, almost directly across from the proposed cell tower. My family and I lost everything in the CZU fire, as so many others did. Does anyone remember how devastating and heartbreaking that was? How many were, tears were shed and how we had to comfort our children when we had nothing left? Eighteen homes are surrounding the proposed, proposed tower right now. Many of us have poured our hearts and souls into rebuilding our homes, making moving no longer an option. My family has no way to escape having a cell tower visible from our deck, living room, and our backyard. Our property values will decrease. This is unfair punishment from a county that we love and support. We are requesting that you please prioritize a loyal resident over an out-of-town corporation with money to burn. This is bad business for everybody. You have, we have given you every legal reason, and this rests in your hands, and we just ask for your cooperation and your understanding. Thank you so much for listening.
Hey, hello, my name is Mary Coyle. I live at two fifty Upper Summit Drive.
Can you bring the microphone down? Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. My name is Mary Coyle. I live at two fifty Upper Summit Drive. My home is on the northeast boundary of the site. Um, I've lived here since nineteen ninety-nine, or at least at this part in Bonny Doon. Um, I oppose this tower, um, for one, because, um, at some point, probably in the near future, relatively near, I will be selling my property and a loss of ten percent will be a big loss to my retirement. Um, but my biggest concern is the addition of plastics from the breakdown of the plastic needles. Um, these microplastics are, um, will get into our watershed. We're at the top of the mountain. Our, um, soil is where many of us grow vegetables and, um, particles in the air. By now, we all, we all know that, um, microplastics are a threat to our human health as well as the health of our planet. So please, um, oppose this tower.
Good morning, board. Thank you for hearing us. I think I would ask you first and foremost to have open minds, open hearts, and step into our shoes for just a moment and take any rubber stamp you might have out of your back pocket. My name is Bob Atten. I live four hundred and thirty-one feet away from this proposed monstrosity. As you've heard, our beautiful neighborhood and much of Bonny Doon was decimated by the CZU wildfire nearly five years ago. We and our neighbors have been devoting nearly every waking hour to rebuilding and reoccupying our homes at great expense and great effort. Then the insurance companies withdrew, and our insurance rates have quintupled with less coverage operated on our, offered on our pro- policies. To now slap an abomination of a hundred and fifty-foot cell tower in the middle of this fragile neighborhood is beyond the pale. Please deny this application. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Zelda McGrath. My daughter and her husband live across the street from the proposed cell, cell tower. Both are doctors and heal people and animals. Why would a mono, monopine be placed right outside of their home? It's well documented by many peer-reviewed scientific studies to cause cancer. My grandchildren, along with others, will also be exposed to these dangers. These towers are not allowed near schools. I'm a teacher, actually. Uh, so why would one be placed in the middle of a neighborhood with other chi- with other children? Other options have been presented to the board in detail. So skipping down here, so what's at stake is the well-being of our Santa Cruz Mountains with all of its inhabitants. And please, we ask for your support. Thank you.
My name's Chris Holman. Um, I've been a resident of Bonny Doon for fifty years. I don't live in the Summit area, but when we were rebuilding our home, um, we lived on Summit for a year. Um, I found that we had excellent cell phone coverage when we lived on Summit Drive, unlike where I live in Pine Ridge. I find it interesting that AT&T is willing to spend a million dollars to improve coverage of a four-mile area of Empire Grade when there are ten miles of Empire Grade where it's absolutely no cell phone coverage, none, zip, zero. It's a safety issue. It's a real safety issue. If they're really interested in improving cell phone coverage, why don't they put the little cans on the telephone poles all over Bonny Doon? It would be much better than ruining the pristine beauty of Summit Drive with an ugly monopine tower. I just have one question for the board. Would you want a monopine ti- tower in your neighborhood?
My name is Erica Snovic. I'm going to yield my minute to Paul Rubio for a song.
Um, gratitude for allowing us this time. And, um, I am Paul Rubio and a leader of a small community of na- native uh, spiritual followers that, um, also believe in sustainability. And we, uh, are standing with the community, the, the young babies, the elders, all those people who have spoke here, and I'm going to send out a little, um, prayer song for them. We all be at the, hey, to my you. They don't touch it, ah, hey, to my, hey, young girl. I check, hey, I, oh, check, hey, I, oh, I, hey, to my, hey, young girl. Hey, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Ellen Kane. I'm a resident of Santa Cruz County for nearly forty-nine years. Um, thank you very much for taking this important, uh, issue to consider that. And I just want to speak about, like, of all the issues about cell phone towers, this is so unnecessary. Like, if they're ugly, let them be ugly. But to try to cover them up with these plastics that are going to fall on the ground and de- desecrate our environment, become microplastics, never go away. I mean, I think for me personally, of all the issues, this issue is like unbearable. We can, if anything, we need to pass laws that they're not allowed to do this anymore. They're ugly, let them be ugly, but don't put this plastic crap that falls on our grounds, goes into our environment, our watershed, et cetera. That needs to be stopped. We need to have a law about that. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Deborah Texara. I live at one eighty-five Summit Drive, and I lost my home in the CZU fire. I opposed installation of the cell tower for safety reasons. Cell towers pose high fire risk. Fire retardant microplastics dry up, break into pieces that blow around and filter into our well-water supply. Cell towers are obsolete technology and won't reach all the mountainous regions of uneven mountainous regions. Pico cells are probably the best. Why are the rights and protections of residents and property owners dismantled after we appeal to the county to protect our neighborhood? Why do county employees relentlessly champion investment in outdated technology despite all the credible research we present? This has been so stressful and expensive for us that I feel I must bring this up. Please, listen to us, your constituents, taxpayers, voters, consider our well-being and our safety.
Thank you. Is there anyone online that wishes to address the board on this matter?
Yes, Chair, we have callers online. Kristy, your microphone's now available.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you for your time. Um, I am calling in to formally express my strong opposition to the proposed construction of this large cellular tower on Summit Drive. Um, as a dedicated healthcare professional with extensive experience in treating patients, including those affected by envi- environmental health stressors, I've become acutely aware of the profound and often underestimated effects of electromagnetic field exposure on human health, particularly from wireless communication technologies. This proposal raises significant concerns about the potential health risk to both the local population and the broader ecosystem. Over the years, I have personally treated a growing number of patients with this electromagnetic hypersensitivity, or EHS, a condition in which individuals experience all of the symptoms you've already heard, including fatigue, anxiety, cognitive dysfunction, et cetera. Some of my patients are so sensitive that they can physically feel the moment someone enters the room with a cell phone in their pocket. This is not a psychological phenomenon. It's well documented. Um, eh, eh, there are many, many, many studies all across the world proving this. Um, you have an opportunity now.
Thank you.
Scott, your microphone's now available.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, I'm a resident of three forty-three Summit. Uh, I have a degree in, uh, electrical engineering from MIT, and I did the original drive testing back in nine eleven of twenty twenty-two, which did indeed confirm the significant coverage on Empire Grade. Uh, one of the objections to building on Patrick is we'd have to build a quote, "an entirely new tower." So instead of building an entirely new tower, we're going to build an entirely new tower. That doesn't make any sense to me. Like a queen in chess, the coverage, uh, gap is likely is, is in Bonny Doon proper. Um, you don't put, you move your queen to the middle of the chessboard to get more coverage. Uh, so then the question becomes, why are they building a tower here where they already have coverage? Why spend millions of dollars, was one of the AT&T proponents saying, if there is no need. The need is clear. This is a backdoor for broadband access. AT&T is trying to build this tower for broadband access to compete with, uh, I believe it's Xfinity. And I don't blame them. At three hundred dollars a month, I too would try to compete with Xfinity. Thank you for your time.
Joel, your microphone's now available.
Are we good? Better now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good. Okay. I'm a friend of the Calhoun family. Um, I see here the two most substantial arguments for or against the opposition, including myself, consists of the juxtapacing towards gaps in coverage and alternative location sites. From what I understand, the FCC National Broadband Map shows that there's plenty of coverage in the region. There's expert witnesses like Kent Chamberlain, residents who care deeply about the issue of taking it upon themselves to drive and show that the coverage is there. And I'm an eyewitness to somebody who's been up at the Calhoun's house, and I have complete coverage. So the second alternative argument, of course, is the alternative locations. And apparently there's the McDermott Fire Station, which the firefighter, of course, is against that. And I would say maybe because of the previous arguments surrounding health risks, but additionally Matthew Kaufman's rebuilt tower. So I think this comes down to a bunch of concerned citizens that don't want this to happen. There's not very, like, strong and substantial arguments to have it happen. So then, of course, it becomes a money motive.
Online user four, your microphone's now available.
As someone who has microwaved injured, I am not in that building because of all the antennas, Wi-Fi, et cetera. because of all the antennas, Wi-Fi, et cetera. Very toxic. I have also been, since I retired from teaching in 2000, provided you with data at countless meetings of the adverse health effects of these cell towers, et cetera. In 2019, I also provided board members with copies of 5G Apocalypse, the extinction event, and all these towers are now 5G, some 6G. The film, the documentary starts out with this quote, "It's important to understand what the 5G is doing and what they say it's doing." We're told on the IEEE Beanforming Document that this technology cooks your eyes like eggs in World War II. We all need to understand these are military weapons.
Rachel, your microphone's now available.
Hello, my name is Rachel Snelling, or Rachel Muller. I currently live in the Ben Lomond area, and I am strongly against this tower as well. So I would really like it to know that the microplastics are not getting into my waterways and the watershed. And I also was a Bonny Dune resident when the fires decimated everybody's house. And I am an instructor, and that was a college instructor, and that was during the time of COVID as well. And so I was able to fully teach online using Zoom streaming live with my AT&amp;T cellphone service. So I don't find a need to have this coverage or have this cellphone tower. We have very good service up in the area of Bonny Dune, where they're proposing the tower, as well as where I currently live in Ben Lomond. I don't want the microplastics in the watershed.
iPhone, your microphone's now available.
Hello, is that me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so my name is Leif Muller. I live at 714 Summit Drive, and I'm in the process of rebuilding. I did three cellphone tests. I drove, I did real time Google Maps GPS and real time cell bar status showing cellphone coverage using an iPhone 14, which had exclusively AT&amp;T service. I streamed video in vehicle the entire time from my address, 714 Summit Drive, to Felton. Then we turned around and went back up to the hill to 186 Upper Summit Drive, the site of the CTI's proposed cell tower. The video streaming in vehicle the entire time never disconnected or dropped, and only once did it pause in the purported cell coverage gap area shown in the AT&amp;T propagation map submitted, but shortly regained video streaming. And that area that it even just paused was in the north gap, not in the south gap. That streaming video, I had 5G. I have it normally. It's my, it's a routine.
Andy, your microphone's now available.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, I'm Andy Fox. I'm actually speaking to you from Patrick Road in the Summit neighborhood. So as you can all hear, we've got coverage. I oppose the tower. Now, regarding safety, FirstNet's available today over Starlink. AT&amp;T's Micro CRD product actually provides it. I think part of the motivation for this site is funding, as mentioned by the CTI FirstNet expert who quoted significant grants available for FirstNet. I deeply question that financial motivation. It's as if CTI are sure a grant for their destructive activity rather than providing a service. Again, FirstNet's available now on Starlink. Regarding alternatives, the McDermott Fire Station alternative is particularly interesting because of its proximity to Pine Ridge and Pine Flat Road, both areas that Chris Holman mentioned. We believe the McDermott site is actually better and supported by the community. CTI are wrong to assert the communities against radio towers. We're not. Finally, regarding AT&amp;T Young's technical input today, please could you correct the record? There's a slight technical error. He said six-
Excuse me, I have a point of order. Can I have a point of order? Do this meeting start at 1:30?
We're going to postpone that to 2:30 for the budget hearing.
You know what? Thank you very much. That answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Solar, your microphone is now available.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, I'm Solar Blackstorm. I live on 305 Summit Drive. I'm resident of Bonny Dune. I strongly oppose this tower. Bonny Dune is full of good people and is a serene mountain. If AT&amp;T puts that tower there, it is going to pollute a rural community of amazing people. I find it completely appalling that we have given AT&amp;T multiple options to move the tower, and we do not have any problem with those spots. Yet, they still insist on putting it directly in our neighborhood. I beg that you hear out these fine people and understand that putting this tower here is egregious, it's wrong, it is unlawful, and it is against God. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Brandon, your microphone is now available.
Hey there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hey, guys, thank you for taking my call. My name is Pastor Brandon Johnson. I've served in Santa Cruz County for the last 20 years. During the CZU fires, I was part of over 20 churches that organized to provide $2 million in relief efforts for devastated people by the CZU fires. Four of the five largest evacuation sites were churches. I believe we have an obligation morally to protect the weak and those who are harassed. This population is still in the process of recovering from a very devastating event. And to let corporate interests come in, $122 billion mega corporation come in and spend a million dollars to upgrade their towers when they're still trying to upgrade their lives is a devastating immoral act. We need to stop this. The technology is already advanced. The low level satellites are better technology than the technology that they want to put in. So please, hear the people and not the corporate interest. Please, this is a $122 billion mega corporation. You are there to represent the people. Please represent them. Thank you.
Satya, your microphone's now available.
Hello, my name is Satya Orion. I'm the organizer of emfaware.org. I'm so impressed by the work this community has done to try to share with you this information, and I hope you will listen to them. In 2018, we worked to get a really protective cell tower ordinance in the city of Santa Cruz, which we shared with the county, that ordinance. But the county has shown no interest in that, and I'm just wondering why. And so I give you, I ask you and say, please, you have another chance here to listen to the community and to look and realize that a lawsuit was brought against the FCC to reevaluate their safety standards. That lawsuit succeeded, but the FCC has done nothing to readdress those safety standards. Consider these things as you make your decision. Thank you so much.
Melanie, your microphone's now available.
Hello, I am Melanie. Thanks for your time. I am calling in to support the Richards family and the community on Summit Drive in their fight against having this tower built. I used to live on Molina Drive, which is about a mile away, and I would often visit this neighborhood when the power was out so I could make calls. It is not needed. There's plenty of reception, and I'm strongly against the microplastics that it causes in the environment. Thank you for your time.
Nicole, your microphone's now available.
Hi, thank you all for your time today. My name is Nicole Williams. I'm a current County of Santa Cruz employee, and I'm also the best friend and godmother of a family that lives on Upper Summit Drive. This cell tower is devastating to these families and to the local communities that have already dealt with so much after living through the CZU lightning fire. As Board of Supervisors and elected officials, it's your job to stand up and be the voice of the people as you were elected to do, not the voice of the corporations. And as you can see, the community wants you to stand in opposition of these cell towers. There are so many microplastics and harmful things that will come to those that live in the neighborhoods. And with the community voices raising together telling you, please vote in opposition of these cell towers. Thank you for your time today.
April, your microphone's now available.
Thank you, guys, for your time. My name is Gabriel Casaro. I am friends with one of the families that lives close by, but I am a resident of the San Lorenzo Valley community in Ben Lomond. I'm here to ask you guys, just like everybody else and all the residents of this community, to express and please plead that you guys do not allow this tower to be built. I think it's evident, just listening to this today, the amount of residents that oppose this proposal. Needless to remind everybody about the CZU fires and everything that this community has gone through. I think putting them through another devastating loss, should you guys vote for this, is simply unfair. So please consider your constituents. Please consider the voice of the people. Needless to say, the precedent that this would set in Santa Cruz County. So thank you for your time.
Chair, I see no further speakers online.
Now, we'll return, we'll, I don't know. We'll turn to fellow board members and see if anyone would like to comment or has questions. I'll start with Supervisor Cummings.
I just want to start by thanking all the community members for coming out today and for really, you know, voicing your concerns. And I want to thank AT&amp;T and CTI also for coming out today to, you know, voice why they support this tower and why they think this tower should move forward. I know that it's been a very long road to get to this day, number of years. But I think, you know, what's important for our board to consider is the information that's been brought forward that really highlights the alternatives that exist in this community. It'd be one thing if we were saying, don't put up any towers anywhere. But we have a member of this community who actually my office has worked closely with because he has struggled to get his tower rebuilt in his neighborhood and continues to struggle with the county to get his tower rebuilt in the neighborhood. And we also have another proposal, the McDermott Tower, which, right now, there's a temporary tower, but there's a proposal to have a permanent tower go in. And there's, we were not hearing, my office isn't hearing opposition from the community for these two towers. I know that the neighbors to the person who's been trying to rebuild theirs may have been complaining to them, but we haven't been overwhelmingly receiving opposition to the two towers that are being proposed. Well, I should say, of the three, this is the only one we are receiving opposition to. And I think that, you know, the neighbors have clearly showed, I think, through the FPP, the FCC maps that AT&amp;T had submitted, saying that they do have coverage to try to get out of the carry of last resort. And the fact that, I think, at the last time we had this hearing, we had heard from AT&amp;T and CTI that the owner of the Patrick Road Tower wasn't interested, when in fact, they are. And I'll also say that that tower is previously 180 feet tall, and we were trying to get it back to that height, and we got pushed back from the county, which has limited it to 150 feet. So there is interest in increasing the height of that tower. And so, you know, based on that, we kind of think we need to consider, you know, who do we want to support today? The people who live in our community or the corporations who are taking the profit off our community? You know, both of these two sites, I think, will greatly expand coverage. And I think that at a minimum, we would need to have a reconsideration of the alternatives if we want to move forward, given the fact that it doesn't seem like there's been an adequate alternative analysis with the potential for the co-location at Patrick Road. And furthermore, I'm deeply concerned with the Sequo analysis that's been conducted. The proponent, the members of the community have brought forward bags of this plastic material that's fallen off of these towers. And based on the current recommendation, there's no responsibility on behalf of CTI or AT&amp;T or whoever's in control of that tower to make sure that this doesn't end up in our environment. And, you know, I just also cannot believe that with it being in our environment for long periods of time, exposed to sun, that there's no potential way for this to break down into microplastics. And even if it's not going to break down into microplastics, it's macroplastic. It's just going to be plastics that's sitting on the ground in our environment. And we, as environmental stewards of this community, should not be supporting that. And so I'm proposed to, and I know that we don't have a whole lot of time because we've got a lot of other things on our agenda. And so I'd like to move that we uphold the decision of the Planning Commission denying application 221049 based on the findings submitted in the Wireless Communication Facility Use Permit findings submitted by the Bonny Dune community.
We need a second to continue discussion on that motion, correct? See, no second. Motion fails. We'll continue with public comment, I mean, with, sorry, not public, with board comment. I'll start to my left, Supervisor Koenig.
Yes, thank you. I do have one quick question, which is, are we required to put the, to decorate this as a monopine, or could we in fact approve a tower without any, quote unquote, camouflage?
I was considering that while during testimony, and the general plan provides protection of the public roadways.
Clearly.
The general plan requires protection of public roadways. The general plan and Sequo do not provide private protection of private views. So it's my understanding, I don't think it would be beyond reason to condition the project to provide a metal tower painted green to match the colors in the neighborhood to minimize microplastics.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. I mean, I thank everyone who came out to speak here today. And absolutely, if this was a question of kids versus suits, I'd vote kids all day long. Problem I see is that we, and, you know, despite the thorough testing done by residents, at the end of the day, the standard, both in our local code and by federal law, is simply that the applicant's own attestation that there's a service gap coverage is enough. And I also have to wonder why, if there was not a service gap coverage, the applicant would be going through all this trouble in order to build a tower. So I'm inclined to, first of all, and I'm seeing the money signs, yeah. They'll make money because more people will get service because they'll now have better coverage. So I just don't, so if we were to simply reject this tower, what's going to happen is the county's going to end up in a lawsuit. We'll pay more money, and ultimately, I think, based on my understanding of the law, I think that unfortunately, this would still be built in exactly the same place. I'd be prepared to move the recommendation with the elimination of, or with the proposed camouflage suggested by staff, that we simply have the tower painted green and that no monopine camouflage be attached. But I think that's the best way to thread this needle at this point. Thanks.
Supervisor Martinez.
I'll second that motion, and I'll also share, you know, I want to thank everybody for being here today. It's clear that this is an important topic, and I listened intently, and I heard every single one of your concerns. You know, I just need to reiterate that our job today is to look at this application and make a determination really on two things, which is that if there, is there a significant gap? And is there no alternative option? And given the evidence that I heard today, I think that it's reasonable to, despite the varying other reasons why it's not a good fit, it's reasonable to move this application forward. Because unfortunately, things like property values, quality of life, other options, other cell options, like, those aren't reasons that we can deny this application today, given- other options, other cell options, like those aren't reasons that we can deny this application today, given the role that the board has. And so that puts us in a difficult position. Nobody wants to be the one who doesn't align with a room full of very committed residents. And so it's, it's a difficult position, but that's, that's where I, where I stand. I appreciate the amendment to paint it green because I think everybody's disgusted by these micro or these plastics. And, and yeah, it's, it's a difficult one, but that's, that's given the evidence I heard today, that's the best decision I can come up with.
Supervisors of SERPA.
Thank you. Um, I want to thank also echo my colleagues here on the board. Thank you very much for coming out, letting us know what's in on your minds and your hearts, et cetera. I was particularly moved by all the children in the room and by a colleague and friend, Chris Homan, who spoke, who I know very, very well. Thanks for coming out today. Chris and I work together. She's a family nurse practitioner at the master's degree and I really trust her judgment. So when she tells me that there's no service down the road, 10 miles away or whatever, in a 10 mile stretch, like that speaks to me because I also live in a rural area where I don't have service, right? There are lots of places in this county that nobody has any cell phone service that we really should be focused on. So I don't know if AT&amp;T could look into these other areas that have zero cell phone service and are the, the people that live there have safety concerns. They're, they're all over our county and we need help in those areas. So thank you very much for looking in other areas that potentially we could put a cell phone tower. I do feel badly for the neighbors in this area whose homes have burned down and now they, they're going to have a cell phone tower there. So I have a question. I'm not sure maybe who exactly could answer this, but would the, could the cell, could the tower be anywhere else other than this particular location to provide actually better coverage to the neighbors who don't have service currently?
Well, so as part of the analysis, I asked the applicant to provide all the tree elevations, ground in the top of the tree elevations to identify where there would be a visual impact. I don't think that there'll be an appreciable improvement because there are no trees on the southeast portion. Otherwise, the tree is fully screened. So I would say no, based on the elevation details. I have a slide of that if you're interested in seeing it. But I didn't include it for purposes of this presentation.
Okay.
I mean, it's in the middle of, it's in the central part of the site, right in, in the middle of all the trees. So there isn't a better location that would provide any appreciable screening.
I know one of the, the, the things that we're also concerned about is continuing safety coverage in terms of our radio networks, et cetera, et cetera. And is it my understanding that somehow this tower is going to be able to push out signals in a, in a better way for like our netcom service or our county fire service, et cetera?
So it's my understanding as prior folks have spoken, that Net, FirstNet will be a provider on this tower with an agreement with AT&amp;T and that that's a public service communications provider. Insofar as any, you know, technical details, I might suggest you ask the applicant about how those communications will be conveyed, but that would be the extent of my understanding. FirstNet will be on the facility and provide public communications. I'm not sure if that gets to your question.
I think so. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, Supervisor Cummings?
Yeah. So I just want to express that, you know, as we're moving forward here today, we've got two groups here. We've got the corporations and we've got our community members. And there's a likelihood of regardless of which direction we move in today, that we'll end up in a lawsuit. Because I think that the community members feel very confident with, you know, the fact that AT&amp;T has, has presented maps under penalty of perjury to the FCC, saying that they do not have gaps in coverage in this area. And this is some, and then AT&amp;T is denying that and saying, well, we do have gaps in coverage. But just because of that, you know, there's a likelihood that on either side of this, we can end up in a lawsuit. And so then for me, the question becomes, do we want to use our local tax dollars to fight against a corporation? Or do we want to use our local tax dollars to fight against the taxpayers? And so that's why I think we should deny this because regardless of what happens, we're going to end up in a lawsuit and we should be representing the people. The people have shown up today. They've spoken up today. They have been able to demonstrate that there's alternatives that exist. They've been able to demonstrate that there aren't gaps in coverage up there. And I think on the, on the basis of that, as representatives, we're supposed to represent the people. That is why we should be taking their side today on this and we should be denying this. And we can leave it up to the courts. If, if the courts, if the courts rule in favor of AT&amp;T, so be it. But at least the people will know that the county and their representative stood up for them when they were, you know, being picked on. And so I'm going to, I'm going to vote against the recommended action, but unless we decide to, to go in in agreement and alignment with the people to deny this, this application.
Thank you Supervisor Cummings. I had, I did have two questions. One was similar to Supervisor Koenig's about the if there's alternatives to the microplastics to these, is there any other alternatives besides the, um, I actually do have a cell tower near me and it looks like one of those, uh, The Walking Dead bat with the, with the barbed wire around it. So I was wondering if there's any other alternatives that don't have more sustainable options.
At present, the monopine with the foliage is the most advanced designed to ameliorate visual impacts. You know, it's funny, I was driving through Mountain View the other day and right as I was going to pass Fremont, they have a facility there that's just straight up. It's a metal facility. Appears that their community is embracing the metal style. I mean, you could potentially ask applicant to consider designs that might include a metal design perhaps as a condition. I don't know. I have not seen any. So I can't, I have no way to know whether that's even feasible. It's not anything I've ever seen in my career for the past many decades doing wireless.
Well, at least if they can match this color, I'd say. But my other question is, you know, we've seen a lot of different maps, AT&amp;T maps. We've got more maps here today. But for the sake of either at Sequo or, or the county planning staff, what are the accepted maps that the county has? I don't know if it's ordinance or code that, that we use to demonstrate the, the gap, significant gap coverage for a wireless communication system.
So the, the current ordinance defines, and as I noted, the significant gap as a certified by the wireless carrier. So that doesn't, that definition doesn't, does not include any, you know, proving documents, if you will. It's a certified document. In fact, the ordinance was revised, I believe it was 2022, by county council, you know, in an effort to streamline it to be consistent with the FCC and federal law. So there is no standard for evaluation in our ordinance. The applicant provides information corroborating it. And the standard by which that I've evaluated for the past many decades has been those propagation maps that you've seen today. That is the standard of analysis and the applicant has maintained that. I have not seen a single application that doesn't provide this level of detail. We don't ask for the, show us the math or the quantity, the RF engineering that nobody understands anyway. They provide that mapping. So to make it, to make it simple for the public and staff to understand, it is not codified.
You know, is there, if, if, so you're saying that like third party maps aren't part of the, I mean, they're part of the, the hearing here today, but in terms of our ordinance, it's not.
The ordinance just relies on the certified statement by the wireless frequency engineer. That's the extent of it. I mean, we always start off with the applicant certified statement and then we drill in year after year, getting more data, you know, test drive data, people saying there's no service. And so then people saying there's service. So we get test drive data and then we ask for more and more information. And then the applicant continues to provide that information out of good faith. And this is where we arrive. If, if the argument doesn't stop, there's never an agreement. The ordinance reflects that in that we accept the certified statement from the wireless engineer. So there are no map, there is no mapping that we accept as a county of gaps in service or otherwise.
Thank you. Okay. So we have a motion in a, in a second. If motion maker can repeat his motion.
So it's a motion for the recommended actions with additional direction to use a camouflaging method that simply involves green paint and no PVC monopine.
You got that clerk? Okay. We got a motion from Supervisor Koenig, second from Supervisor Martinez. If we can take real call vote.
Supervisor de Serpa.
Aye.
Cummings.
No.
Martinez, Koenig.
Aye.
And Hernandez.
Aye. Motion passes. One, one no vote. Supervisor Cummings. We will now move Chair.
Just as, as a house, as a housekeeping matter, we have a closed session. We have a budget meeting that was supposed to start at one, at 1:30. So suggestion would be that we break right now for closed session and that we continue this meeting until the end of the next meeting that's going to start at 2:30. So, so we have a, we have the budget meeting that would start at 2:30. Then we will pick up the rest of this meeting. Once that meeting closes, does that make sense?
Yes. So we're going to close for a closed session. We're going to return and postpone for one hour the budget meeting. If anyone's here for the budget meeting right now, and then after that, finish the rest of the agenda. Yes. And there's nothing reportable from closed session. Thank you.
Recording stopped.
And let me count these real quick. Were we? So that I have to adjourn this and actually adjourn this meeting.
Budget hearings, yeah.
Sorry. No. No, no break. Okay, moving on. Item 11, hold the public hearing to consider the fiscal year 2025, 2026 benefit assessment, service charge reports to various county service areas and take all related actions.
Thank you Chair and Supervisors. Matt Masato, Director CDI. This is all of our road CSAs, 17 CSAs. This is for a CPI increase covering 843 parcels. The recommended action today is to hold a public hearing. Your objections or protests, if any, for this 25, 26 benefit assessment, a charge report. And then also to adopt the resolution confirming the benefit assessment service charge reports for the various CSAs. And I can't answer any questions you may have.
First, I'd like to take it out to the public to see if anyone would like to address us on this hearing. See none? Anyone online?
I have no speakers online, Chair.
I'll bring her back to the board to entertain the motion.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Martinez, second from Supervisor Koenig. Can we take a real call vote?
Supervisor de Serpa.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Koenig.
Aye.
And Hernandez.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have item number 12, hold the public hearing to consider the proposed fiscal year 2025, 26 benefit assessment, service charge reports for sanitation county service areas numbers two, five, seven, zones one and two, 10 and 20, and take all related actions.
Thank you Chair and Supervisors. So this is our sanitation CSAs for the charge report. So CSA two Placed Immer, CSA five Sand Dollar in Canyon Dell Soul, CSA seven Buller Creek, CSA 10 Rolling Woods and Woods Cove, and then CSA 20 Trestle Beach. And so this is a 2.4% rate increase EPI across the board. So to provide the sanitation services, the recommended action is to hold a public hearing. And then also to adopt a resolution confirming the benefit assessment service charge reports, which is in the details for assessment per parcel. This is a sewer service charge though. We can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. First, I'll take it out to the public. See no one wants to, anyone online?
No speakers online, Chair.
I'll bring it back to the board to entertain the motion.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Martinez, second from Supervisor de Serpa. Can we take a real call vote?
Supervisor Koenig.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
De Serpa. Hernandez.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. 13. Next, we have item number 13, hold the public hearing to consider the resolution confirming proposed fiscal year 2025, 2026 assessment service charge, charge reports for the county service area 12. Good evening. Is this on? Yeah. I don't know about you guys. I thought it'd be out of this tie by now. Health Services Agency requests that the board hold a public hearing and adopt the resolution confirming the proposed fiscal year 25, 26 assessment service charge reports for county service A 12 wastewater management. We recommend that the board open a public hearing, hear sport objections or protests, if any, close the public hearing and adopt the resolution confirming the proposed fiscal 25, 26 assessment service charges for county service area 12. I'll open up the hearing for a public comment. Seeing none? Anyone online?
I have no speakers online, Chair.
And I'll bring it back to the board to entertain the motions.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor de Serpa, second from Supervisor Cummings. See if we can take a real call vote.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
De Serpa.
Aye.
And Hernandez.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have item number 15, hold, continue public hearing to consider the certification of the vote results for county service area 26, Viewpoint Road and take
Sorry.
25, sorry, not 26. Oh, I'm going ahead of myself. Hold continued public hearing to consider the certification of the vote results for county service area 17, Empire Acres, and take all related actions.
Thank you Chair and Supervisors. So the item before you is CSA 17, Empire Acres, election results. We mailed out 51 ballots, 18 were returned, 15 yeses, three nos, 83, little more than 83% in favor. The increased assessment will generate $3,800 additional per year for the CSA. The recommended action today is to accept certification of the vote results for CSA 17, direct the Deputy CEO Director CDI to retain the ballots for at least six months following the certification and to adopt this board items resolution authorizing, levying the assessment for road maintenance operations and projects within CSA 17 for 25, 26 fiscal year.
Thank you. We'll open it up for public comment, for, open up the hearing for public comment. Seeing none? Anyone online?
You have any speakers online, Chair.
I'll bring it back to the board to entertain the motion.
With recommended actions.
Second.
We got a motion from Supervisor Koenig and a second from Supervisor de Serpa.
Supervisor de Serpa.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Koenig.
Aye.
And Hernandez.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Next, we got number 15, hold a continued public hearing to consider the certification of the vote results for county service area 25, Viewpoint Road, and take all related actions.
Thank you Chair and Supervisors. So this is CSA 25, Viewpoint Road and Aptos. We did mail out 54 ballots, 41 returned with 36 yes votes, four nos and, and one invalid. So 90% in favor of the assessment increase. The increased assessment will generate additional $5,400 to the CSA. The recommended action this evening is to accept certification of the vote results for CSA 25 and to adopt a resolution authorizing and to adopt a resolution authorizing and levying an assessment for road maintenance operations for CSA 25 for the 25-26 fiscal year and each year following. Answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for the presentation. I'd like to open up the public hearing for public comment. See none? I'll bring it back, see if there's online.
You have no speakers online, Chair.
I'll bring it back to the board for, to entertain the motion.
I'd like to move approval.
I'll second. I have a quick question. Can you repeat those numbers? How many?
Yeah.
How many ballots went out and how many were returned?
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four mailed and 41 were returned with 36 yeses and four nos and then one invalid.
Thank you. We have a motion from Supervisor, okay, de Serpa, second from Supervisor Cummings. If you could take a roll call vote.
Supervisor Koenig.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
De Serpa.
Aye.
And Hernandez.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have item number 17. Continued, a continued public hearing to consider the certification of the vote results for the County Service Area 46 Pine Crest.
Um, wait, we skipped one. Item 16, sorry.
Yes, getting ahead of myself again. Hold continued public hearing to consider certification of the vote results for County Service Area 32 View Circle and take all related actions.
Thank you, Chair and Supervisors. So this is CSA 32 View Circle. Nine ballots were mailed, four were returned, three yeses, one no. 75% in favor of the new assessment. The new assessment will generate an additional $2,500 per year. The recommended actions is to accept certification of the vote results and to adopt a resolution authorizing and levying an assessment for this CSA for this fiscal year and each year following. And I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. First, we'll open it up, open up the public hearing for public comment. See none? Anyone online?
No speakers online, Chair.
Bring it back to the board to entertain the motion.
Recommended actions.
Second, we have a motion from Supervisor Koenig, second from Hernan, Hernandez.
Supervisor de Serpa.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
And Koenig.
Aye.
And Hernandez.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have item number 17. Hold continued public hearing to consider the certification of the vote results for County Service Area 46 Pine Crest.
Thank you, Chair and Supervisors. So this is CSA 46. We mailed 36 ballots, 21 were returned, seven yeses, 13 nos, one invalid, 35% yes, 65% no. And so the community does not agree to increase the assessment rates. So the annual assessment will, the annual assessment revenue will remain at its current $10,792 for the CSA. The recommended action is to accept certification of the vote results for CSA 46 and to adopt a resolution confirming previously established benefit assessment for road maintenance operations and projects within CSA 46 for this fiscal year and each year following.
Thank you. We'll open up the public hearing for public comment. Anyone wishes to address us? Anyone online?
No speakers online, Chair.
We'll bring it back to the board to entertain the motion.
Move the recommended actions.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Koenig, second from Supervisor Cummings. Can we take a roll call vote?
Supervisor de Serpa.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Koenig.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Yes, next, we have number 18. Hold public hearing to consider approving in concept and ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of the, of the County of Santa Cruz amending zoning plan and map pursuant to chapters 13, 10 of the Santa Cruz County Code and rezone APN 08909160 to the timber, timber production zoning district. Confirm the proposal is exempt from requirements from CEQA and take all related actions. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Good evening, Board Chair Hernandez and Supervisors. My name is Alexandra Corvello, the project planner. This is a proposal to rezone a 10.1 acre parcel from special use zone district to the timber production zone district. Property is adjacent to two timber production parcels that are owned by the same property owner. This property is located northwest of the city of Boulder Creek in the San Lorenzo Valley. It is very steeply sloped with no current development and is a heavily forested parcel with second growth forest. There is a solid forest resource that meets the state and county standards for rezoning as outlined in the foresters letter. The property is located in the mountain residential general plan area, which makes this rezoning consistent to the general plan as timber production is allowed within this classification. Under the Santa Cruz County Code, the required findings for amendments to the zoning ordinance and zoning map are specified on the slides. Findings one, two, and three on this slide are mandatory and at least one of five additional findings are required. Those are both identified as A and E, which can be made at this time. This proposal is supported because it will serve a public benefit to reduce fire loads and allow for economic development. The proposed rezone is statutorily exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under section 15264. I would like to note that while this proposal amends the zoning designation, the timber harvest itself is subject to additional evaluation by the Department of Forestry and Fire Protection. Therefore, the recommended actions are as followed. Conduct a public hearing on application 241318 and the proposed rezoning ordinance. Determine the proposal is exempt from further environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act. Approve in concept the attached ordinance to rezone this parcel to timber production and approve application 241318 based on the findings and conditions contained in the staff report to the planning commission as well as direct the clerk of the board to schedule the ordinance for second reading and final adoption at the June 24, 2025 Board of Supervisors meeting. The slide does incorrectly say August 5. This concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone on the board like to address us on this hearing? See none? Anyone online?
I see no speakers online, Chair.
I'll bring, bring it back to the board. Supervisor Martinez.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I know that this is a parcel in my district. Because it's connected to other timber parcels, it meets state law. I know it was also supported by the planning commission, so I will be moving the recommended actions. Thank you.
Was that a second? Okay. We got a motion from Supervisor Martinez, second from Supervisor Koenig.
Supervisor de Serpa.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Koenig.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have item number 19. Consider approving in concept or in ordinance amending subdivision A of section 2.02.060 of the Santa Cruz County Code relating to the compensation of the Board of Supervisors. Take, and take all related actions.
Good evening, Chair Hernandez, members of the board. Ajita Patel, Personnel Director. The existing ordinance for Board of Supervisors salaries is reviewed each June. The current salary structure is set at 62% of the Superior Court judge salaries. In order to maintain the 62% alignment, staff recommendation is that you approve a 2.62% increase to your salary today. With your approval, we would bring the item back on consent agenda for a second reading on June 24 and the increase would take effect on August 25, the 61st day of passage. I'm, and my comments here and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. First, I'll open it up to the public, see if anybody wishes to address us on this item. See none? Anyone online?
See no speakers online, Chair.
And I'll bring it back to the board.
Yeah, we'll just say I'm supportive of this today and, but I do think maybe in the future, there's an opportunity for us to have a conversation around, you know, whether this is the appropriate way to link our salaries or if there's some other mechanism. I know that we're going through negotiations and for, you know, our previous, you know, we were working with our SEIU employees, you know, we agreed to 4.4, 3.5 over three years. And I know the other bargaining groups are going to be coming to us for similar, you know, wage increases. And I think, you know, for the amount of work that we put in, like not even getting a 3% raise, which is pretty standard for COLA, you know, seems like it's, it's kind of, one, it seems like it's a little unfair for all the work that we put in. And, and two, I think, you know, is this the appropriate way to tie our salaries? And so I don't want to entertain anything today, but I think there might be a conversation worth, you know, is this the appropriate way we should be linking? And then also it'd be good to just learn more about this process. I know it's kind of outlined on like 62%, why 62% of judges' salaries, like so I think it'd be good for us to have a conversation in the future, but also knowing that a lot of folks are going to be negatively impacted by the administration, our ability to try to support our workforce. And, you know, I think that if we're taking a less increase this year, you know, I think it's appropriate. And over time, we can see how we can maybe adjust that to be a little bit more equitable with other pay increases with our other county workers. So I'll move the recommended action.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Cummings, second from Supervisor Martinez. We could take
Supervisor de Serpa.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Koenig.
Aye.
And Hernandez.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next is item number 20. As the Board of Directors of the Davenport County Sanitation District, hold the public hearing to consider the proposal, proposed fiscal year 25-26 Davenport County Sanitation District water and sewer service charge reports and take all related actions.
Thank you, Chair and Supervisors. Yeah, thank you, Matt Machado, your CDI Director. So on May 6, your board adopted a resolution setting the water and sewer service charges for the Davenport County Sanitation District. And set today is the day of the public hearing for these water and sewer service charge reports. The water and sewer service charge reports contain the assessor parcel numbers and the amount of water and sewer service charges for each parcel. The proposed increase this year for water service charges is half a percent. And the recommended action tonight is to hold a public hearing and hear objections for this fiscal year 25-26 water and sewer. I'm sorry, and I missed something on there. I mentioned the half percent water rate increase and the sewer rate increase is 4.7%. Sorry, missed that piece. The recommended action is to hold a public hearing and hear objections. And then also to adopt the resolution confirming the 25-26 water and sewer service charge reports for the Davenport County Sanitation District. And I can answer any questions you may have.
We'll open it up to the public. Seeing nobody here, we'll open it, see if there's anyone online.
I see no speaker.
We'll bring it back to the board.
I'll move the recommended action.
Second. We have a motion from Supervisor Cummings, second from Supervisor Hernandez.
Supervisor Koenig.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
De Serpa.
Aye.
And Hernandez.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll move on to item number 21. As the Board of Directors of the Freedom County Sanitation District, hold the public hearing to consider the proposed fiscal year 25-26 Freedom County Sanitation District sewer service charge report and take all related actions.
You, Chair and Supervisors, again, Matt Machado, your CDI Director. And so again, on May 6, your board adopted the resolution setting the the sanitation charges for the Freedom County Sanitation District. They were set at a rate increase of 2.9%. The sewer service charge report again is just a listing of all the APNs and the appropriate sewer service charges for each parcel. The recommended action for this evening is to hold a public hearing, hear objections or protests, if any, and then to adopt a resolution confirming the 25-26 sewer service charge report for the Freedom County Sanitation District.
Thank you. We'll open it up to the public. Seeing nobody here, we'll bring it back to see if there's anyone online.
No speakers online, Chair.
And we'll bring it back to Supervisor de Serpa for a motion.
Also move.
Second. Supervisor, we got a motion from Supervisor de Serpa, second from Hernandez. If we could take a roll call vote.
Supervisor Koenig.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
De Serpa.
Aye.
And Hernandez.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have item number Meeting adjourned. You know, the, the good thing about 6:30 is that less traffic home.
Recording stopped.
Only silver lining.